Good evening and welcome to the Cottage Grove Planning Commission Regular Meeting for April 26, 2021. We'll start with call to order and roll call. I'll turn it over to Director Boike for roll call.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bigum.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Knabel.
Here.
Commissioner Rasmussen.
Here.
And Chair Kamada.
Here. Item, next item on our agenda is going to be approval of tonight's agenda. Again, I'll look to the Director for roll call.
Commissioner Bigum.
Motion, are we motioning or roll call?
Oh, sorry. I'll look for a motion first.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda, Commissioner Bigum.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Fisher.
A motion and a second from Commissioner Fisher. Now I'll turn it over to the Director for roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Take number two here. Commissioner Bigum.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Frazier.
Aye.
Commissioner Knabel.
Aye.
Commissioner Rasmussen.
Aye.
And Chair Kamada.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, will, on our agenda will be open forum. Before we get started, I'm going to go ahead and read some instructions for participation. Attendees will have one of two ways in which they can participate. First, you may post a question using the Q and A option. If you post a question, I will state the question to the Planning Commission and staff, and we will address the questions accordingly. Second option, you may use the raise my hand option. If you wish to verbally ask a question, please test your device's microphone prior to selecting the raise my hand option to assure that you'll be heard. I will then call on you by name and ask the question. Please understand that once the question is asked, you'll be muted. If you have a follow-up question, please reselect the raise my hand option. Open forum is intended for anyone to raise an issue that is not already on tonight's agenda. I cannot, I just want to specify that if you have questions or comment on something that is already being discussed tonight, then you would want to wait for the public hearing portion of that application. So with that, I'll open up open forum to anything that is not already on tonight's agenda. And I'll just check with Director Boike. I don't see any inquiries. Can you confirm that?
Mr. Chair, I do not see any as well, so I think we're good.
All right, then we'll move on to item number five, Chair's Exclamation of the Hearing Process. The Planning Commission is a volunteer advisory group to the City Council. One of the Commission's functions is to hold public hearings and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. The purpose of these public hearings is to provide an opportunity for each applicant and citizens to present information, ask questions, and express opinions. Since these proceedings are televised and recorded for the public record, anyone wishing to speak can do so in one of two ways. Again, you may post a question using the Q and A option. If you post the question, I will state the question to the Planning Commission and staff, and we will address the question accordingly. You may also use the raise my hand option if you wish to verbally ask a question. Test your device's microphone prior to selecting the raise my hand option to assure that you'll be heard. I'll then call on you by name to ask the question. Please understand that once the question has been asked, you will be muted. If you have follow-up questions, please reselect the raise my hand option. Staff reports are prepared and provided to the applicant and Planning Commission in advance of this meeting. The first step in the hearing process will be for staff to present a summary of the report. The applicant will then have an opportunity to briefly explain the proposal and provide additional information or comment. Anyone wanting to speak in favor or against the proposal will then be heard. Upon completion of the testimony, the hearing will be closed with public comment. The Planning Commission will then discuss and act on the matter. The Agenda Packet is available for viewing on the Cottage Grove City website. The City Council will act on these items at their meeting on Wednesday, May 19, 2021, which starts at 7:00 P.M. Move on to item 6.1, Johnson Garage Conversion, Case V2021-032, with Emily Schmitz presenting.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission. The first item before you this evening is an application received by Mr. Mark Johnson. It is an application requested to convert a detached structure into a dwelling space on his property located on East Point Douglas Road. It is located just south of the Cottage Grove Ravine Park area, and as you can see, kind of to the south and east of the intersection of Keats Avenue and East Point Douglas Road. It is located within the R1 Rural Residential Zoning District, which does in fact allow for accessory apartments, although they are required to be within the principal structures, therefore the variance request. Again, Mr. Johnson's parcel is a two and a half acre parcel, again, within the Rural Residential Zoning District. It does have the principal structure, the house, which was constructed in somewhere around the 1920s, along with three detached accessory structures on the site. The parcel does not have access to city sewer and water. Therefore, septic system and well are privately maintained on the site. As you can see, those take up a large majority of the site. The applicant is requesting to convert the accessory structure within the southeast corner of the parcel into a dwelling. He has recently relocated his mother here from Illinois to, of course, be closer for her care as she ages. The principal structure on the site does require a handful of stairs to get up into the structure. That's why Mr. Johnson is thinking that having the dwelling unit here in the accessory structure that is more at-grade would be better access for his aging mother at this time. Again, unique to the property, the elevations, the location of the existing septic system and drainage drainage field do, of course, restrict the ability to add on to the house. Again, therefore, that variance request, it is certainly a reasonable request in use, given, again, accessory apartments are permitted within the R1 zoning district, and these are unique to this particular property. So with that, I will leave the recommendation before you, but I will note staff has prepared a handful of conditions, one including before any building permits were to be issued to the property owner that we would need verification from Washington County that the septic would support the additional dwelling. We would also require that a rental license be secured for the accessory structure, and at such time, a blood relative would no longer reside within that accessory apartment, that it would be converted back to an accessory structure. I believe the applicant is in fact on the call, but of course, staff is available for any questions as well.
Thank you. At this time, would the applicant like to add anything to the application? Okay, I'm just going to check in with Director, make sure I'm not missing anyone here.
Yes, it looks like the applicant has raised his hand. Let me just find him here, and I will unmute him. All right, Mark, you should be able to talk now.
All right, Mr. Johnson, if you're there.
Can you guys hear me?
There we go. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening. Again, Mark Johnson asking for the variance request. I don't have any, I guess, extra comment. I just wanted to make myself available if you guys had any particular questions. I guess the short story is my mother, 82 years old, in good health, other than she was a victim of a pretty significant car accident earlier, early, early to mid, I guess we call it mid 2020. She was run over, and so that, there was a continuum of a care that had to happen. She can't do stairs. So she's sort of come out of the woods on that, but now we're moving into some other surgeries that she has to have. So it's going to be sort of a long-term need for her not to do stairs, which is really what's behind all this. And plus, my father, unfortunately, in Illinois passed away earlier, shortly after this, shortly after the accident down in Illinois. So she literally doesn't, I have to keep her up here. And that sort of facilitates the need for her to be here with us. So just a little bit of background, if there's any questions you guys have, I just wanted to make myself available.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. At this time, anyone who'd like to speak for or against the application may do so. You may ask a question in one of two ways. You may post a question using the Q and A option. If you post a question, I will state the question to the Planning Commission and staff. We'll address the questions accordingly. You may, or you may use the raise my hand option. If you wish to verbally ask a question, please test your device's microphone prior to selecting the raise my hand option to assure that you'll be heard. I'll then call on you by name, ask the question, and ask the question. Please understand that once the question is asked, you will be muted. If you have any follow-up questions, please reselect the raise my hand option. So with that, we will open the public hearing on this application. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the application may do so. And again, I'll just check in with the Director, make sure I'm not missing anybody. If not, I think we can move on here.
Mr. Chair, I'm not seeing anything.
All right. Then at this time, we will close the public hearing on this matter. Do we have any questions or comments from the Planning Commission?
This is Commissioner Frazier. I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
So Emily, I'm assuming the reason why we're not doing interim conditional use permit is because this is a permitted use and not a conditional use for this property?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frazier, that is part of it, as well as our zoning code outlines only a handful of uses that are permitted with an interim conditional use permit. Therefore, we went the variance route to allow for that. Yep.
Okay. And then my, so my other concern and why, obviously, I think ICU P would be better, obviously, I get a dozen feet here, is, but that it won't run with the property. And so I know there are a couple of conditions that staff put in the report that try to limit who can live there and when this variance ends. Are we fairly confident that, I mean, that that's going to be an effective limit on the ability for Mr. Johnson or a future property owner to be able to go back and say, well, there was a variance granted, so now I can use this as an apartment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frazier, we're quite confident that those conditions will give us enough leverage, for lack of a better way to put it. With the rental license, we do require inspections. I believe it's biannually, and I believe that application for that rental license does require folks to note who is residing within the property. So I think that gives us a pretty good, you know, handle to make sure that if at any time a blood relative no longer lives there or the property, you know, changes hands, that we would be aware.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question for staff. Emily, to kind of piggyback off of Commissioner Frazier's question, what recourse would the city have to revoke the use if these conditions were not met?
Mr. Chair, I believe we would use it as any other rental license. You know, if they're not meeting the terms of, well, not only the variance, but the rental license, you know, we are able to take action. I would say similar to a code enforcement case, for lack of a better way to put it, and require that dwelling to be converted back to an accessory structure.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions from the Commission? At this time, I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve, subject to the conditions stipulated in the staff report. Commissioner Fisher.
We have a motion to approve, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report from Commissioner Fisher. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Rasmussen.
Second from Commissioner Rasmussen. Further discussion?
This is Commissioner Rasmussen here. I'd just add that I'd agree with staff. It's a reasonable request in use. It seems like their conditions are well spelled out. They're going to deal with all the challenges of this correctly, so I'm in favor.
Agreed. My one concern with allowing an accessory structure to be turned into a dwelling unit was, you know, causing a, kind of, if one gets to do it, then others would seek to do it as well. However, seeing as there are conditions that need to be met, and the applicant meets the standard for unnecessary burden, I feel comfortable, I feel comfortable voting to approve the application. Any additional comment? All right, we had a comment, and I think it was the applicant. I just want to say, I think it's great he wants to, oh, it's coming from another party. Well, then with that, I would look for a motion or put it to roll call. The motion is to approve from Commissioner Fisher and a second from Commissioner Rasmussen. I'll turn it over to the Director for roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Rasmussen.
Aye.
Commissioner Bigum.
Aye.
Commissioner Frazier.
Aye.
Commissioner Knabel.
Aye.
And Chair Kamada.
Aye. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item 6.2, Hinton Woods, Cases CP2021-024,ZA2021-025, and PP2021-026, with Mike presenting.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. All right, the item in front of us tonight, D.R. Horne is proposing a, submit an application for a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, rezoning, and primary plat for development known as Hinton Woods. The proposed development consists of 104 townhome units and 61 residential single-family units, for a total of 165 units. The proposed development is located at the southwest corner of Hinton Avenue and 65th Street. The current zoning of the subject property is R2.5 residential, single-family, and is guided on the land use plan as medium density and mixed use. The developers are proposing a Comprehensive Plan Amendment to re-guide the existing mixed-use district located in the northeast corner to medium density that would be consistent with the rest of the parcel. And in addition, due to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, to rezone the property from R2.5 to R5, medium-density residential with the planning development. A little background on the project, we did have two neighborhood meetings for this item. The first one was a virtual neighborhood meeting on April 15, 2021, of 18 residents in attendance. The applicant did a brief presentation of the proposal in front of us tonight. Most questions raised were about landscaping in Birmingham around Hinton and 65th. Landscaping and screening betroths between the proposed development and the existing Pine Arbor neighborhood. Construction timing and access, primarily did not want access for construction vehicles going through Pine Arbor. And then concern of a lack of an access on the proposed, from the proposed development onto 65th Street. A second neighborhood meeting was held onsite on April 19, with 24 residents in attendance. And in addition to the residents, there was staff, and there was the city engineer, Public Works Director was in attendance, and the Washington County Public Works Director. The Mayor Bailey was in attendance, and so was Councilmember Olson. Primary discussion was about the absence of an access on the 65th Street. We'll cover that more as we get into the proposal tonight. And in addition, D.R. Horne staff also walked the site with the applicants to discuss landscaping and screening. As previously stated, the project is located to the west of Hinton Avenue and to the south of 65th Street, east of Cottage Grove Elementary. The proposal is, proposal site is currently consisting of a tilled field with a small portion of wooded area in the west side and a delineated wetland on the northwest section of the map, which I will highlight. Right up in here. In the middle of the site, there's a 2.8 acre wetland with a permanent easement over it that the city maintains. And within that easement, there is a stormwater pipe and sanitary sewer that runs down through the site, the storm. Both pipes will be vacated and reconstructed as part of this project. There is a minor wetland here that is not delineated that the applicant's proposing to fill, and that would be relocated to this corner as we get into the site plan. There is an existing barn onsite, and then some woodland along the perimeter of the site. The subject property is currently guided as medium-density residential and mixed use in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Medium-density residential in this land use category allows for densities of 5 to 13 units per acre. The mixed-use land area located in the northeast section of the property is approximately 9.37 acres, and uses generally include a combination of higher-density residential, commercial services, and employment opportunities. Densities in this land use district range from 20 to 40 units per acre. The subject site, if the current guiding could easily have over 600 units onsite with these two uses on, with these two current guiding districts. However, as this application informs tonight, the applicant is requesting to re-guide the mixed-use area to medium density. The medium-density permits of a density of 5 to 13 units per acre. The applicant is proposing 165 units with the proposed density of 5.04 units per acre. With any Comprehensive Plan Amendment, you are required to go through the Met Council's process. And it's a long process. When the applicant makes application, the city is required to notify adjacent communities and governing bodies, such as the School District and Watershed of the proposed amendment. And in addition to, the city that's requesting the amendment has to hold a public hearing, which we are doing tonight. A public hearing was published in the Pioneer Press, and it also sent to properties within 500 feet. The city did provide notice to adjacent communities and impacted municipalities and governing bodies, and has received feedback from four, excuse me, five communities of support. Woodbury, Rosemont were the latest ones, Newport, Hastings, and Denmark Township, I believe, are the ones that submitted letters of support. So tonight, we're holding the Planning Commission. We will hold a public hearing after this, and then the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council then reviews the proposal and adopts a resolution to submit the proposed Comprehensive Plan to the Metropolitan Council for review. Then the 60-day clock ends for adjacent communities to provide comment. If no comment is received within that period from a municipality or governing body, that is, they don't have an opportunity to provide comment, and it is a no comment and comment of support. Then the application is submitted to the Metropolitan Council for review and approval. And once the Met Council approves it, we update the website and the Comprehensive Plan to show the amendments within the document. So it's a long process, typically takes about 60 to 100 days. And right now, we're at the Planning Commission phase. With any kind of Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the zoning district cannot conflict with the proposed land use. When there is a conflict between the Comprehensive Plan and zoning code, the city is required to amend the zoning code to comply with the Comprehensive Plan. The subject property is currently zone R2.5 residential, single-family. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property as part of this application from R2.5 to R5, medium-density with the PUD, which is consistent with the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the surrounding area. The primary plat for this project, there is 61 single-family units located on the west side of the property. And then there's 104 townhome units located on the east side of the project, located adjacent to Hinton Avenue. The applicant is requesting PUD flexibility regarding the minimum lot width and area, and front yard setback, and maximum impervious surface. The proposed flexibility is consistent with other developments within the community. flexibility is consistent with other developments within the community. The minimum lot width is proposed at 55 feet with the own zoning standard of 60 feet. The front yard setback is 30 feet in this district. They're requesting 25. And maximum lot coverage and previous is 45. They're requesting in 40 in the district. In addition to the minimum lot area, there is one lot that is below the current standards of the district, but the average overall for the entire development is 8,807. I want to also point out too, on the screen, the yellow highlighted area is going to be HOA maintained. The homeowners association will maintain this area and there will be an HOA. The single-family part of the property will not have an HOA. The proposed site has access, two access from existing curb cuts. The first access is located on the east side of the subject property on Hinton Avenue. And this will be the primary access into the site. The secondary access is located on the south side of the proposed development and connects to the existing Pine Arbor Development via Pine Arbor Boulevard. Pine Arbor Boulevard will be, is, um, will be narrowed as it comes into development. The existing Pine Arbor roadway section is at the old standards. Then as the road is constructed into the proposed development, it will be reduced to 28 feet, which meets the current standards. As a condition of approval, no construction access to the site shall be permitted off of Pine Arbor Boulevard for the duration of construction within the development. The existing barricades shall stay in place until such time a proposed street is connected. And then there is no access proposed on the 65th Street as the city's Cottage Grove has adopted the Washington County's access management plan, which does not permit an access from the subject parcel onto 65th Street due to spacing standards. The image on the screen is a image from the access management plan that the city adopted. The access management plan was adopted shortly after the city adopted the comprehensive plan. And then within the comprehensive plan, there is a document for this site that shows an access up to 65th. That plan was done before the city adopted this access management plan. If you look at the image here, the yellow arrow pointing down from the subdivision to north, that is a future restricted access. That will be a write-in, write-out. And then the for future intersection here could be a roundabout or intersection. The county is reviewing that with the assistance of the city. And there is a full access here at Cottage Grove Elementary and the, and the subdivision to the north. We zoom in here to a little closer look of the proposed subdivision. If you note, the two access points here are on Hinton Avenue, as discussed, and the Pine Arbor Boulevard. As you can see here, the access to north lines up with a proposed expanded, lines up with the existing wetland and expanded wetland. And so the topography here would be very difficult to tie in a roadway here due to the wetland here proposed and due to a lot of stormwater on the site has to stay on site. And there is a delineated wetland here that cannot be filled. So there's a number of constraints on the site that will not, that restrict the access on the 65th Street, such as the pioneering and the, and another thing is the topography here. There is quite the drop-off here off the site. If the access were to be provided, there'd be significant filling of this wetland here and site impacts due to an access. The city and county staff, per request from the neighborhood meeting, are reviewing the potential for a future roundabout instead of a signal at the Hinton slash 65th Avenue, um, to 65th Street intersection for the possibility of a write-in, write-out into the development. However, there is significant site constraints as previously discussed. The proposed development will have sidewalks and trail to the site. As shown on the screen here, there'll be an existing sidewalk from the Pine Arbor development that will tie into the proposed sidewalk that goes through the site and feeds out to Hinton Avenue. And then there is a proposed trail connection to Cottage Grove Elementary, but it's an eight-foot, eight-foot wide trail section. Again, there is sidewalks within the HOA maintained area. And their developer is discussing or looking at potentially tying in this sidewalk here to the trail to provide another access from the townhome units to the trail. The applicant did discuss the proposed eight-foot trail connection to Cottage Grove Elementary and with the school district. The school district had no concerns and supported it, the proposed access. They liked the idea to have the tie-in there for the potential future residents to have their children, be able to have the access to the site. It's worth noting too, that the proposed sidewalks will connect to the trails along 65th and Hinton, which provide access to numerous trail, parks and other trail opportunities in the community. As no parks are provided within this proposal division, there is a number of parks within pedestrian, this is seen on the site. I'm going to turn it over to Emily for these next couple of sections.
Thanks, Mike. Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As with any development project, we do require a tree inventory be conducted of the site, which denotes all qualifying trees on the site. And then, of course, our zoning code allows for the removal of a certain number of those trees, and any trees removed greater than that number are required to be placed on site. I'll note that the applicant is proposing to replace those trees required per the mitigation on-site, as well as meeting all of the minimum landscape requirements per the zoning code for both the townhome portion of the development as well as the single-family portion of the development. One thing I wanted to point out is they are in fact maintaining the existing mature landscape buffer along the south property line to, of course, keep that buffer between the existing neighborhood to the south there. And then along Hinton and 65th, as you can see, they are proposing a substantial amount of landscape screening or buffering, however you would prefer to look at it, but it will align with existing developments to the south as well. Next slide, Mike. And then a brief overview of the stormwater pioneering utilities. I know Mike touched on this already, but as you can see, Outlet A and Outlet B will be utilized for stormwater management on the site. Both of those will be deeded to the city for long-term maintenance of those. And as Mike has already mentioned, a portion of Outlet A, along with some existing sanitary sewer pipes, as well as some stormpipes that run to that south boundary there, again, are in that permanent easement and that which will be vacated as a part of a final plat. And then the developer is proposing to reroute those pipes within the developments. We'll work through that as a part of that final plat. And then finally, I'll mention the connection to city utilities will be just off of Hinton Avenue, just south of 65th Street, as well as at Pine Arbor Boulevard. All of the sanitary sewer and water main within the site will be maintained by the city, but I'll note some portions of stormwater pipe and infrastructure within the townhome portion of this development will be long-term privately maintained by the HOA.
All right. Thank you, Emily. On to architecture. As previously stated, the applicant has two products on site. One is a multifamily townhome unit, as shown on the screen. It has a varying facade materials of hardy board, shingle plank, and, um, stone and rock feature at the base. And these proposed units will be, will have, um, relocated adjacent to Hinton Avenue and consist of four, five, and six flex buildings. The proposed townhomes have rear-loaded two car garages, as shown in the image here, which creates a sensibly pleasing front entrance streetscape for guests and visitors. As you can see here, this is a model picture from one of their other developments of the proposed product. It has a very welcoming streetscape, urban street, streetscape, excuse me. And then in the back of the building, it has the garage with the deck area as well. The approximate square footage is 1,687 square feet. These units will start in the low 300s as base. The other product on site is the single-family. There is a number of varying styles here. As they're shown on the right-hand side, the, this is the first time this product will be offered in the East Metro currently, and the second time in the state. The other products, products currently available in Dayton, this is D.R. Horton's newest product that fits on a 55-foot lot, as we're discussing tonight. The proposed homes range in square footage from 1,300 to 2180 and offer multiple elevations and floor plan options. It can be built with a basement or without a basement. But buyers can choose from single living, single level or two-story homes, or two, or three-car, or the option of two to four bedrooms. As you can see here on the screen, there is the two-story option, full two-story. And then there is the slab-on-grade, single-level living with an option of playing a bedroom on the second floor. They also have the option to put basements on all these models. These will start around $400,000. Here's some more additional elevations. As you can see, there's multiple varying different elevations of different materials and slightly different architectural features. So tonight, there's, um, the planning commission is being asked to make recommendations for three items, a rezoning, comprehensive plan amendment, and a primary plat. We do have on staff Ryan Burfond, our city engineer and public works director for any questions, and the applicant is available as well. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, would the applicant like to add anything?
Good evening. My name is Deb Ridgeway with D.R. Horton. With me tonight is Mike Sewell and Fran Hagan. Between the three of us, we think we can answer questions that may come up. I got nothing really additional to add, except that we will continue to work with the Pine Arbor neighborhood on the, the buffering and potentially a fence along that south property line. But otherwise, we're here for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any quick questions for the applicant from the commission? All right.
I'm sorry. I was looking for them unmuted. Commissioner Bigum, I have a question, probably for staff, possibly for the applicant as well. Regarding the trees, going back to the diagram about the south side, it looked like those trees were staying as a buffer from the twin home residences that are already there. Are the trees along, I guess that would be the west side that border the elementary school parking lot, do those, do those remain as well? Are those on this property or are those on the school district property?
Yes, there is some trees that are on the school district's property that will be remaining. They are, I'm pointing them on the screen right now.
Yep.
They are going to maintain these trees that are along on the school district's property. They will stay. However, there is some trees that will be removed as part of this project down in this quadrant of the, of the development. The school district has agreed verbally on this. They have to bring this to the board for approval, but the intent of removing these trees down here is so that grades can tie in. And is this, there is an existing water main that runs through here as well, so it provides a better access management plan for staff to get in there and maintain that water line if needed. However, there is some trees and buffering along the west property line that will maintain or will stay, excuse me.
Okay. And then kind of one more question about the landscaping and specifically on that side. The proposal from the applicant on the, the use has a path going towards the west to the elementary school, which would then go into the parking lot. So where the connecting point would be, it would be then for the school district to adjust their landscape and structure to accommodate a walking path or whatever that may be continuing on to the, the school district property?
That is, that is correct. So the applicant will construct the trail and sidewalk connection for the school district. And we'll tie, there's only like one tree that will need to be removed, a couple of trees here that are going to be removed to tie this in. The school district was supportive of that and the trail tie-in. I don't know if the applicant wants to add anything to that for that discussion we had onsite?
Yeah, we'll work with the school. We're in, in constant contact with the school regarding this trail, so we will work with them on the extension. We thought that the trail actually extended along that parking lot, but when we were out onsite, we discovered it doesn't. So we'll work with the school on how that will tie into ultimately the crosswalk that goes across that driveway and onto the school sidewalk system.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no additional comment from commission? I think we will go ahead and open public hearing on this one. All right. Again, before we go ahead and open public hearing, there's one of two, two options for participants to state their questions. One, you may post a question using the Q and A option. If you post a question, I'll state the question to the planning commission and staff, and we will address the questions accordingly. The second option is to use the raise my hand option. If you wish to verbally ask a question, please test your device's microphone prior to selecting the raise my hand option to ensure that you'll be heard. I'll then call on you by name to ask the question. Please understand that once the question has been asked, you'll be muted. If you have any follow-up questions, please re-select the raise my hand option. And with that, we will open public hearing. I'll start by reading, we've got a statement from, from one participant, and then, once we're done with the written statements, I'll move over to the, the ones that wish to speak. So first is from Schillinger, says, "I live within 500 feet from this and was not notified until the other day about the public hearing. I do not support this at all. It will flood. Additionally, Cottage Grove Elementary, the playground will not be available for kids to play on during 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM school year summer due to kids' club before and after-school care." I'm reading this verbatim. "Where will all these kids go to school? I opened and enrolled, I opened and enroll my child into Cottage Grove Elementary, and traffic is outrageous in that area picking up kids. Can I recommend a back splash pad by the wetland? I'm not for any roundabout by me at all. The speed limit can change due to the county road." I think we'll break this down into several questions. One is addressing the, um, the notice that goes out to neighboring residents. The second is the public use of the school property. The third would be, you know, as far as demographic and school zoning. And fourth would be traffic. The splash pad, I think, is an unrelated item that the city may or may not want to touch on. And then the roundabout, I think, kind of circles back, and the speed limit circles back to that traffic control issue in, in the, the previous question as far as traffic conditions. So I guess I turn it over to staff and see how they want to address those.
Yes, Chair. Thank you for the question. We have discussed this with the school district a couple of times now. We primarily, with any application that's adjacent to a school, or any application for a residential project, we share the plans with the school district so they can plan accordingly. In the conversations with the school, the schools in the area, especially in the middle, the middle schools, elementary schools, elementary schools, excuse me, have enough sizes to adequately handle the increases students from such development and other developments in the area in the next five years in our conversations. So they are aware. We like to share all the plans with them. We have a good relationship with the school district. In regards to us and to the playground, the school district, I am unaware of that one. I don't know if other staff can answer that one. But there is additional parks and opportunities in the area, yeah. There isn't none directly in, within the subdivision, but there is some within walking distance, within the quarter-mile spacing that usually people walk to a park or an amenity. I don't know if Ryan, if you want to answer some of the questions in regards to traffic onto Hinton and the roundabout?
Yep, certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This is Ryan Burfond, our public works director and city engineer. In terms of traffic in this area, there certainly is, I think, a well-known, you know, busy, very busy period during pickup and drop-off, very specifically about a 15 to 20-minute window, morning and evening or morning and afternoon. That's something we continue to work with the county and our police department on. That's something we continue to work with the county and our police department on different options. It's definitely increasingly worse this year. We've met with the school district about it. Due to COVID, there's a much lower amount of children riding buses and a much higher amount of drop-off happening, the school district's indicated. So they're hopeful. You know, the really bad situation right now is, is also a short-term situation in the long run. In terms of traffic and access, Hinton Avenue, of course, as Mike mentioned, is a full access onto the county road. It's set up in our access management plan as, you know, likely a future signal. So it'll be maintained as a full access and then controlled the signal as traffic naturally, you know, grows throughout the city. In regards to Hinton and Sixty-Fifth Street, I know Mike mentioned, and what is that in the future, but that's very much, you know, an unknown at this point. It could be a roundabout. It could be, there's a lot of pros and cons to each of those and that type of location. And another consideration with, you know, not having access to Sixty-Fifth is, in addition to this plan and the access spacing, are those challenges with the school district and the elementary school? Adding another access point directly on a Sixty-Fifth, you know, there's not, not nearly as much of a benefit to that. If, without the access, if folks want to use Sixty-Fifth, then they need to go out into Hinton and then up to Sixty-Fifth and take a left, which is, is fine. Those will be two controlled points. So that's another consideration as we further look at Sixty-Fifth Street as well.
All right. Thank you. Did we, did we touch on all of those questions that were stated?
Mr. Chair, this is community development director Ben Boyk. I think the other thing, and we have another comment on the Q and A is the notification. Our policy, our city policy, is to mail notifications to all property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property in addition to listing all public hearings in the Pioneer Press ten days ahead of the meeting. So those are the two policies that we have in terms of notification for public hearings.
And Director, is that in accordance with state statute?
That I believe is above and beyond state statute. State statute reads three hundred and fifty feet. So we do go a little bit further and up that to five hundred feet to extend that range a little further.
All right. Thank you. Just to, before I exit out of this question, the anonymous attendee stated that they were not notified of the application until the other day. Their first question was, "Why are, why are only the residents within five hundred feet notified when it will affect many more in the neighborhood adjacent?" Director touched on that. And they also state that they're not in support of this either due to traffic concerns and the, where the proposed main exit is. Then we have another statement here from Schillinger stating, "Speed limit on county road cannot change. I do not want a roundabout on Sixty-Fifth and Hinton. I do not want townhomes at all by me." With that, I think it's important to understand that per land use and zoning requirements, as, as Mike Miroslav had stated, we are, as, as the city and as the planning commission, we are kind of bound by what the 2040 comp plan dictates. So in land use and zoning matters, so long as the applicant is meeting their, the requirements of that zoning, current zoning or of the future proposed use, as long as they're within the confines of, of those zoning requirements, we, we are kind of limited on, on what we can and cannot approve for applications. With that, we will go to the raise my hand option. Director, I'll let you start. I think Vivek was the first one in the queue. And we'll go ahead and get started with those.
All right, Vivek, I've just allowed you to speak. If you want to go first.
Hi, thank you very much. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I appreciate taking this opportunity. I've been living in Cottage Grove City for twenty years, and this is the first time I joined the, the meeting like this. I'm, I'm, I live within hundred, five hundred limit for the proposed prop development we are talking, discussing here. And I've been very happy living in Cottage Grove, although when the second time when I bought this home in the Silver, Silverwood neighborhood. I wanted to move in Woodbury, but I chose to stay in Cottage Grove because the city has done it really remarkable work to keep the neighborhood spacious. I'm really happy the ravine park you guys did really absolutely fantastic job. Although, so I'm a little bit surprised keeping that theme of spacious home and give enough. So I was surprised when I received last week that letter of rezoning. I'm a little bit disappointed with the city decision to add more. And I agree with the previous people. There is the concern. I have similar concern. I live on Sixty-Fifth Street. I've been living there for nine years. I have seen the significant increase in the traffic noise. And with all the new development coming in, not only the school traffic I'm talking about, I'm talking about the constant noise going on because of the traffic. Now, that's one of my concern, adding the more townhome. You're talking about one or four home, which almost roughly, I would say, more two hundred cars per resident. So that's one of my concern. My, I am also concerned about the safety. My kids have grown up, but when they were young, they couldn't go to city, to the school by walking, even though we were very close, because there was no sidewalk. So now, you know, think about kids living there, crossing the street will be impossible. And I don't see any planning from the city to either make a skyway or something for, so the kids can go to the school, enjoy the park. So I am, that's one of my, those are my concern. And I really don't like the, I like the Cottage Grove. I like the spacious neighborhood. I don't want to see the, the way the Woodbury is. It's, they all packed, and I think, to me, it should stay the way the Cottage Grove, the, they, they zone it initially in the planning. To me, I see is the, of course, as a property builder, I would like to maximize the number of houses I can build. And I see this is also for the city to aim to raise more property tax. So by no means I see that city is making that decision in the favor of resident being living there for many years. With that, I open for your remarks.
Thank you, sir. What we'll do here, it looks like we've got a few more in the queue, is we'll, we'll let everyone speak and then we'll have staff and the applicant address these concerns individually in, in the interest of expediting and being conscious of everyone's time. I would like to ask that everyone try and limit their comment to three minutes. With that, we'll move on to the next, the next person in the queue. Director, if you go ahead.
All right. Next up, we have Kevin Ron, and you should be ready to talk.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Kevin Ron. I am the association vice president for Pine Arbor Ramblers. As was indicated earlier, we have had some meetings, virtual meetings, a walkthrough, and overall, not too bad. We do have this main concern of Sixty-Fifth Street. And because of the uniqueness of this virtual meeting, I will go ahead and pose all my statements. It looks like the chairman is accepting those and then they'll be addressed later. But I want to start off with, the report by city staff in no way states why this is being asked to be the comprehensive plan amendment, amended. They, they do not demonstrate if there was a hardship on the, the part of the applicant, D.R. Horton. And I think that there should have been a queue or a setup as to why this is all changing. Of great disappointment is the fact that shortly after the 2040 comprehensive plan is supposedly accepted by the city, they changed the rationale for street access. And, and that's a tremendous disappointment. What that sets us up for as residents, and I think you're going to hear more say the same, is a complete switch. You have a stated use, land use of mixed-use business, R two-point-five, and the next thing we know, it's going to be a much higher density and no access whatsoever into Sixty-Fifth Street. I want to make it clear, it might have been misunderstood. We are not asking for Pine Arbor Boulevard, where it is circled on the lower left of this picture, to be closed. We never were. We're concerned that there's going to be too much traffic routed that way. Sixty-four Fifth or County Road Seventy-four is labeled a collector road on both the state, excuse me, well, yes, state, county, and city comprehensive plans. I won't talk down. I hope, I believe the commissioners are probably well-versed and have been trained in your jobs as citizen commissioners. Collector roads are intended to take traffic from residential areas as quickly as possible in the most viable and expedient method to get traffic moving through the city. As you can see by this graphic, that's not going to happen, ladies and gentlemen. They are routing the traffic through another residential neighborhood. What they don't show or haven't said is that if somebody can't get to Sixty-Fifth in the manner that they want, they may come through the Pine Arbor Association, which is fine. But to get to County Road Seventy, excuse me, County Road Twenty-two or Seventieth Street, and that's not fine. We do not want to be a thoroughfare. The other thing is, is we are a PUD, of which they are looking to reamend to this. And as such, we have a number of businesses in our, in our subdivision, one of which is a gas station, which does a booming business. And we suspect that a lot of folks in the morning, we are all creatures of habit, would do the same thing. We will, they'll come through our association to go to the gas station. And it's unfortunate that the business was not able to be planned. So with that, again, we are not asking for Pine Arbor to be closed. We are asking for access to Sixty-Fifth. If, if all of a sudden, it's decided that this one subdivision cannot access Sixty-Fifth, we view that as arbitrary and capricious, as that all of a sudden, the city, county, whatever, decides to change the game plan. Both the county's comprehensive 2040 plan and the city show Sixty-Fifth Street, County Road Seventy-four, to be a turnback road to the city at some point. And then at such time, the city is going to incorporate it into the ravine Parkway, which is a nice thoroughfare through the community. It routes a long distance and should have great access. Staff did indicate that the holding pond has to be, Outlet A has to be expanded. And of course, when you put on triple the residents that were initially slated for this area, more asphalt roofs, more asphalt streets, driveways, what have you, it's going to take greater water. Not to mention that that outlaw, outlaw already receives the storm water from north of Sixty-Fifth as well as a swale that comes from the northeast, excuse me, northwest corner. And what they show as a wetland is it's really an artificial wetland, commissioners. Because what it boils down to is it's taking all the storm water. And, and that's, and that's what's keeping it so large and why it would never dry out, okay? I don't know if it was always intended for it to do that, but it became a very convenient location for that to happen. With regard to this is that if you look, and I would hope staff could scan for you the east side of Hinton and show you the other subdivisions, it seems that all subdivisions in this area have access to Sixty-Fifth Street. Thank you. If you look at the access points, this particular one doesn't show east of Hinton, but everybody has access to Sixty-Fifth Street with the exception of this new proposed subdivision. And that just doesn't seem to make sense. This means that school buses coming through have to drive a circle, what have you. I won't belabor this point. I know there's others waiting to speak and so forth. But this is a tremendous concern. And again, Mr. Chairman, you stated that you, you know, if it's within the confines of the comprehensive plan, you, you are obligated to follow that. And I would concur with you on that. But the problem is, is once again, the applicant has changed or requested a change to the comprehensive plan. We would have been totally fine with what was slated to go there. And now we don't think there's enough justification without allowing access to Sixty-Fifth Street to assume that this particular project should go in. I want to just quickly conclude with, Chapter Thirteen from the League of Minnesota City's handbook talks about comprehensive planning, land use, and city-owned lands and so forth. This is a guide to, to the cities. And Cottage Grove, I've been a resident for forty-two years. I very much appreciate how this city has developed and gone forward. But comprehensive plan is the equivalent of a business plan to a business. It's how to guide it into being the best it can, growing the best it can, and good for everybody. And the LMC handbook states that "You should create the opportunity for residents to participate in guiding the community's future." And if we can't do that on the front end where the comp plan was set, we are now telling you that we would like to guide this future of this particular parcel. Because once that parcel is developed and there's no access to Sixty-Fifth, as we told the developers, there is no do-over, there is no mulligan for putting that street out there. And I think the other thing I will conclude with is that the League of Minnesota City says, quote, "Ensure that growth makes the community better, not just bigger." This development is three times the size of what it would have been had it remained a zoning of a two-point-five. And again, there just was no reason of any type why the developer needed to go to this particularly. With that, I will yield, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kevin. Again, we will let everyone get through their statements, and then we will have the applicant and staff address those concerns in an organized manner. With that, I'll let the director move on to the next speaker.
Okay, it looks like next up is Paul Mordorski. Sorry. You are ready to go?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you to the, the previous speaker. I had a lot of the same comments. I live at sixty-four Seventy-two Hearthstone, so my house backs up to Sixty-Fifth and overlooks the, the, the property that's being proposed for development. And I would echo the comments that I don't see the city's justification for the, the change in the zoning. I also don't agree with and see a basis for all of the exemptions that are being asked in order to build smaller, higher-density structures and homes on the property when it's completely inconsistent with the rest of the land use around it in terms of the number of units per acre, as well as what was already previously approved. So I feel like this is a big change. The second thing is, I believe there was a, some wording in the original notification. I apologize. I'm, I'm not at home and don't have access to it at the moment. But I just wanted to get the city to, to go on record, just to confirm that the, what's referred to as Outlet A and Outlet B, that those will remain managed wetland pond areas and not be developed. I believe that one of the notifications previously referred to the outlots and potential development in the future or, or something to that effect, or maybe it was just management. But I just want to make sure that that was, that those are maintained and not developed for, for housing or other use. And then my other question is that I thought that the city's zoning regulations required for the city to assess whether or not environmental assessment or environmental impact statement would be required in order to, to complete any rezoning. And so if the And so if the, the committee can speak to that, that would be greatly appreciated because I feel like that is a significant thing when we're talking about so many impacts to traffic, to safety, to aesthetics, to housing values, to so many other things. When we say environmental assessment, that goes far beyond impacts to air and water and things like that. So for the most part, I'd say those are my, my comments. I really think that, you know, as Vivek had stated as well, Vivek's one of my neighbors. You know, I understand the city's willingness to approve it. Somebody's coming in to develop the property. I understand that that's a benefit to the city and to all of us for the increased revenues from the tax base, obviously compared to, to the farmland that it currently is. It's a significant increase, so I totally understand that. But I just think the desire to cram so many homes onto that property, there's so many reasons why that doesn't make sense. And the previous speaker spoke to many of those things. If we think just simply about the flow of traffic for all these units that are being proposed, it is going to be a mess. And this clearly has not been thought through. We need to slow down. We need to do that. And I honestly think that that is justification for an EA or an EIS on this development.
Thank you for your time, sir. We will go ahead and move on to the next speaker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, this is Al Homestead. Please, go ahead.
Good evening. I'd first like to thank you for your time. As a resident of the Silverwood neighborhood at 6415 Hearthstone, I'd like to voice my opposition to the removal of the mixed-use zoning at the northeast corner of the parcel. My wife and I would be greatly disappointed if the potential opportunity for some truly walkable amenities were to be lost. There was a reason that this was zoned as mixed use, and that's, there really aren't walkable amenities near us. There are amenities at 70th and Hinton, but those aren't really reasonable options, particularly if you have a young family like we do. I have no opposition to the rest of the plan. I know there are challenges with the grade and water management of the site, though I think you might find that the Southern Silverwood and Pine Cliff residents might appreciate a little more water in our drainage basin, which almost is always completely empty. And I understand that D.R. Horton, being a home builder, would prefer to build homes. But I believe what it would be best for our and the surrounding neighborhoods is retaining the mixed-use zoning. Should it not be developed as mixed use by D.R. Horton? Or if no other mixed-use developer were to take it on, then it's near certain that it could be rezoned and developed as residential at some point in the future. I don't believe that the city should accept residential on that corner as the first option. Thank you.
Chair, you're on mute there. I'm assuming you're wanting to move on to the next.
I'm sorry about that, yeah. Thank you, Al, for your time. Appreciate that. Let's go ahead with Scott.
All right, Scott, you're ready to go. You unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, yeah, we live in the Silverwood Association, less than 500 feet from where this proposed change is happening. And we have great concerns, one about the traffic and the safety of the community and the residents and their families and whatnot, getting to the school and whatnot. We also greatly oppose the townhomes in that northeast section there. That does not match any of the other corners around here. We have concerns that that might lower the home values in the area and then cause additional traffic, as mentioned by the previous speakers. The, the, the homes on the other side, I would think would be okay. However, we'd also like to have a homeowners association on those properties in order to maintain the value of it and the upkeep and the appearance of it. And to keep this side of the city looking very, very nice as it currently is. Those townhomes don't really fit in with this entire area over here in the configuration that they have. So we would like to oppose that. And also, I heard you all talking about a roundabout. We would also like to oppose any kind of roundabout at 65th and Hinton. The one just south of there at 70th, ever since they put it in, it's just people don't know how to use these things up here. And I've been in more near crashes since that has been put in than at any time in the last 15 years when the stop sign was there. So that's what I kind of have to mention about that. I'll let my wife say anything. Oh, she's good? Okay, yeah, we're good on that. So we'll yield to the chairman here.
Thank you for your time, sir. With that, we'll go back, and we've got a couple of additional comments that we'll touch on. Some of these are reiterating what was already stated. So I'll start with the new comments. Says the Cottage Grove 2040 Comprehensive Plan states that the corner of 65th and Hinton is mixed use to encourage neighborhood services within walking distance to the area. We need to adhere to that plan, or our long-term planning doesn't help us accomplish our goals of building the community we want. I'd like to have a small retail space and the jobs it would bring, thin walking distance of our neighborhood subdivisions. I propose we keep the zoning as it is, use our long-term plan as the community-building tool is intended to be. And then there was an anonymous one that said, "I second this." Those are our Q and A comments. And we have some people that have commented in the chat section as well. And I would encourage you guys to utilize the raise your, raise your hand option if you wanted to make a comment on record. These are a little hard to keep track of. Okay, with that, I'll turn this over to just double-checking, making sure I'm not missing anyone. Director, do you see that I've missed anything, or are we, have we addressed everyone?
I believe we have at this point. Actually, we just had a raise your hand. Looks like Keith Freeburg.
All right, let's go ahead with Keith.
All right, Keith, you can unmute yourself. You have the floor.
One of the things I wanted to point out is the Pine Arbor Boulevard, or Pine Arbor Boulevard as it goes through, and you talk about the two exits that traffic would go through. One is on the 70th, and the other one is a limited access, or is limited. The one on 70th is limited. And the one that goes to Hinton is extremely busy. And what we have found since the roundabout went in, cars that come up the 70th and either go straight across or are turning onto it used to start out from a stop. Now they're going around a roundabout at about 20 mile an hour. And when they get to the intersection of Pine Arbor and Hinton, they're flying. So it's a very difficult intersection to use. And so you are going to put a lot more pressure on one more intersection plus the two that are already there, one being limited. I think the density of the townhomes puts it into a very dangerous situation. And so I'm, I'm very concerned about all the townhomes going in there. The other concern I have is, they mentioned Holiday Station. Well, that's a magnet to kids during the day. And you can go out there and see kids crossing on Hinton, going across Hinton to get to the station. And cars are going really, really fast. I'd love to see the speed limit on Hinton reduced, north of 70th all the way up to 65th, as well as anything we can do to make those intersections better. And maybe it is the stop-and-go lights. But right now, Pine Arbor Boulevard and Hinton is a very dangerous and difficult intersection. Thank you.
Can we get, sorry, Keith, can we get your address for the record?
6753 Pine Arbor Boulevard.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I think, give it one more second here, and then we will go ahead and close public hearing. All right, with that, we will close public hearing. Given the depth of comment, I would propose a five-minute recess to allow staff and the applicant time to maybe prepare some responses to the statements that were made. Does the commission have any agreement on that?
Commissioner Rasmussen agrees.
Right.
Mr. agrees.
All right, Director, is this something we would need roll call for, or is this something we can do informally?
I think informal's fine.
All right, let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll be back at 8:22. I think best course of action here is to let staff address these items on an itemized basis. I'll turn it over to staff now if they're ready.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you for all the great comments from the public hearing. It was a very good discussion. First item I'd like to discuss is the density. As you can see on the screen, the existing land use or current land use is medium density and mixed use. This was a change that occurred as part of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. In the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, which was completed around 2010, the subject parcel is guided as single-family, a lower-density product. As part of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, in order to diversify the land use and housing styles in the area and provide an opportunity for a commercial node on that property, the property was reguided as medium-density, and the mixed-use node was added. And I will let the developer discuss the commercial node here in a second, but I just want to go through the permitted densities as part of this. The medium-density district allows for densities of 5 to 13 units per acre. The proposed property, or the subject property, is 39.95 acres. And when we do the calculation for density, we do gross acreage. We do not subtract the wetlands and everything else. So with that said, you could have on there approximately, if it was, this whole site could be theoretically townhome units, not the proposal from the site where there's a mixture of single-family and townhomes. So if the entire site were to develop at a townhome unit at the maximum density permitted within this zoning, within this land use district, not the zoning district, the land use district. The land use is the guiding document here. The comp, the zoning district has to be changed to relate to the comprehensive land district or land use. So that 39.95 acres times 13 units per acre, that's 519 units to be built on here of just townhomes. Now, we have to throw in the aspect, too, that there's a mixed-use district in the right-hand corner, in the upper northwest corner. That mixed-use district is intended to be a mixed-use of commercial, jobs, and housing. Most likely, you would see a potentially of an apartment building with some first-level shopping opportunities, maybe some commercial building standalone. But mostly, if I see, if it were to develop as a mixed-use, a mixed-use product or a commercial node and residential. That district allows for units of 20 to 40 That district allows for units of twenty to forty units per acre. That sub, that northwest section of the property is nine point three-seven acres. So if you were to do the maximum forty units per acre times nine point three-seven, you would have three hundred and seventy-four units potentially in that corner alone, for a total of seven hundred and seventy-two units potentially on the site. Now, but that's, that's just, you know, throwing numbers out there, and, but, but the moral of the story is, the proposal from us tonight is the applicant's request in five point zero-four units per acre, which is on the very low spectrum of the density that could occur here on this parcel. They are located, specifically located, the higher-density adjacent to Hinton Avenue, which can support those trips onto the site, onto that roadway, as the majority of the trips will be exiting onto Hinton from the site. Approximately, I would say eighty percent of the trips are going to go through Hinton. Yes, there will be some trips that go through the Pine Arbor development, about twenty percent I would predict, being more the single-family. And yes, there'll be the outside numbers that would go through as well. But just to relay it again, the proposal in front of us tonight is a very low density compared to what could go there. The minimum for this district alone is five acres, the applicant is, or five units per acre. The applicant is proposing five point zero-four units per acre. So point zero-four above the minimum for this district. With that, back to the mixed-use district, the applicant did do a trap, a commercial study, and I'd like to turn it over to the applicant to kind of talk about the commercial note in the corner there and what their study showed.
Hello, Deb Ridge, way again. Yes, we, early on, when we, when we had this property under contract, we did reach out to local commercial developer, commercial brokers to gauge interest in the site for commercial. And what we were told is the lack of access to Sixty-Fifth Street causes a challenge. In addition to the grade change, so the site sits much lower than Sixty-Fifth, so the visibility is not necessarily there for commercial use. So that, those were the two main things as far as a commercial. We also talked to a couple apartment contacts that we have, and the thought there was that it probably is not ideal for apartments due to the lack of public transportation nearby to the site. So that's the background that we have, and then we, like, like, proposed today, continuing with the townhome development, the townhome proposal.
Deb, I have a follow-up question for you.
Yes.
With, with that outreach to, to other developers, in past projects, when you guys have sought to do a mixed-use development, what kind of economic motivators are those developers looking for that would steer them towards that type of use versus away from it?
I'm going to turn this over to Mike. He has more experience with the, the commercial aspect of development.
Good evening. Mike Sewell with D.R. Horton. And as Deb mentioned, we did look, we did reach out to commercial folks. Some of the things they talked about with the lack of access and such, and then also with the way the world has changed because of COVID, with more delivery being done, that the commercial down on Seventieth and the commercial north in Woodbury is, would make it difficult for this site to succeed as a commercial property. And on some of the other sites that we worked on, we've had to go with TIF districts, we've had to go with tax financing for apartments, for workforce, housing and such. It's, it's just, it's difficult and
For, for those who might not know what TIF is, that's Tax Incentive Financing, which is essentially having to subsidize it so you can't find a free-market participant. Is that correct?
Correct. They, they need something to help offset their costs of the infrastructure and such to make it worthwhile to come. The places that we see that works with commercial and apartment over them are more redevelopment. There's, there's few places where commercial on the bottom and apartment on the upper floor work in developing outer edge communities. So that, that, that's the struggle we find when we go out there and try to find people to partner with us on these sites.
So by redevelopment, are you stating you would take a commercial area that is already serving demographic and then add residential above it essentially?
Correct.
Okay, so starting from the ground up is harder than starting with an existing and thriving commercial area?
Yes, yes, it, it needs a lot more density around it to make it work, from what I understand. And, and the other thing you got to keep in mind is there's other commercial pockets within the City of Cottage Grove that are proposed in their comp plan that have better traffic patterns and better locations than the site, so it just, this site was a really tough site to find someone to try to partner as a commercial developer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that answer.
Add a little more too, to that commercial note. The problem isn't the, is the, it's the lunchtime trips through the area. This site sees a lot of peak AM and, and PM trips via Hinton. Generally, what you want to see is about ten thousand trips a day during the lunchtime hour to be able to support a use, a commercial node like that in an area. Especially if you have one more Dixon, more dense and more mix of a retail, you want to see that higher trip volume on the roadways adjacent to it throughout the day, not just at peak. Just to add a little bit more to that, and that's a good segue to the next section. There's a lot of conversation that was had about the traffic, and I'd like to hand this over to Ryan to address some of the questions in regards to traffic volumes and the connection to Sixty-Fifth.
Before we move on to traffic, can I ask one more question about the commercial aspect? This is Commissioner Fisher.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering, so when, when we sit down and do a comprehensive plan, which was just approved in 2020, if I am not mistaken, to 2040, why weren't some of these studies taken into account then? There's got to be some reason why our comprehensive plan notched out this piece of the property for mixed-use. So I'm just wondering, all these, all this information is great, you know, trips up the, up the road, you know, the topography, the different ways that we could use this piece. It's interesting now, but only two years ago, it was, it was kind of carved out for mixed-use. So I'm wondering how the initial committee came up with the mixed-use and why it's so different now than just a few years ago?
Yeah, Chair Kamada, I think I can take that one, if that's okay?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add a, a little bit to that. When I, when I came on to the planning commission, they were developing this plan, and I believe at that time, there, there had been no, no investment in apartments. And I think that was one of the primary motivators, was trying to get some higher density and more affordable market rate housing here. And I think the landscape has changed on that in the recent years, which may have alleviated some pressure for that here. Then I'll let you take over.
Yes, great question, Commissioner Fisher, and thanks, Tony. So really, bottom line is, we did not have a project at this property until late last year when D.R., Gera Horton came to the table. So when they first came to the table, we, we showed them the land use, the existing land use on the 2040 comp plan, which is on the left-hand side of the screen here, and said, here's what we have to work with. Three-quarters of the property is guided as medium-density, so calls for that five to thirteen units per acre, which typically with medium-density, you're looking at townhome development. And the northeast corner is guided as mixed-use. I think with really the goal of having something similar to what you see to the south in Seventieth, with kind of a commercial node with some retail. And in talking with D.R. Horton, they, they tried to abide by that initially, and they did their research, they talked to commercial brokers, and that's where we found out this information about, A, the grading, the visibility, you know, the, the questions about access and not having access on Sixty-Fifth Street due to the county management access guidelines, and then traffic counts. So really, it, it took a development to come to the table to realize that mixed-use really doesn't fit this corner. We actually had that conversation with the city council at their strategic planning session beginning of the year. And that was at that point that the direction was to move towards a medium-density for the entire property based on those factors that we've outlined here tonight. So it took D.R. Horton really coming to the table to show that, you know, mixed-use is not a good fit for that corner.
Director, I'm curious if in, in, in the early stages of developing these comp plans, when the city is kind of steering these, these land uses, would it be atypical for them to do this type of comprehensive study prior to having, you know, a buyer or a developer kind of with, with a concept? Or, you know, all the time I hear about the city making shovel-ready sites. What does that, what does that mean in terms of, you know, what, what could have or should have been done differently here?
Sorry, I don't think I'm necessarily following the question. So you're talking about the comp planning process?
So, so yeah, during the planning process, when, you know, we sat down, we had focus groups, we determined that, you know, we kind of steered this area for this, but as you stated, no one was at the table wanting to really do anything with it yet. So the city was just kind of imagining what, what could transpire there?
Correct, and, and part of it is
Would the city, would the city or should the city have preemptively done a, a, you know, an in-depth study like this? Or would that, is, is that atypical for a city to, to do this kind of, you know, feasibility study prior to having a buyer?
Yeah, not necessarily at the comp planning stage, so the Metropolitan Council has various guidelines or goals for each city to, to meet, in addition to the fact that, you know, the City of Cottage Grove is primarily comprised of single-family homes. So one of the pushes with the 2040 comp plan was to adhere to some of the Met Council goals in terms of diversifying the housing stock, as well as quite frankly, the city council's goals of allowing areas for higher-density development, residential development, as well as townhome development. So being that there is medium-density to the south, this particular property being undeveloped was guided as medium-density with the thought that, you know, maybe another commercial node could fit at that northeast corner, just on a high level. But after kind of getting down in the weeds and talking to this developer, it just really wasn't feasible for that corner.
All right, thank you. And how are we doing on the bullet-pointed list of, as far as addressing the public comment?
I believe Mike was trying to turn it over to Ryan to become a comment on some of the questions about traffic.
Traffic flow, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I, I did make notes during the public hearing, so I, I hope I catch all this. If I miss anything, I do apologize. I think the first thing I'd like to reiterate and touch on is how Mike talked about the potential number of units. So from a traffic standpoint, we're actually talking about significantly less units than what, you know, could be here per the comprehensive plan. And when we do the comprehensive plan, we do look at traffic, we work with Washington County as well. And we look at what potential traffic will be created by the comprehensive plan. So we don't create these plans assuming, you know, raw land stays as undeveloped, right? You know, the city's going to develop following that plan. So actually being on the low end from a planning perspective is a benefit. In terms of the existing traffic in the area, I think it was mentioned during the mixed-use discussion, it actually is. It's not significantly high for these type of roadways. There's certainly peak times, like the elementary school, drop-off and pickup that are challenging, but some of the numbers is around twenty-three hundred cars a day on Sixty-Fifth Street. That's actually significantly less than what we have on a lot of our collector roadways like Hillside Trail or Seventy-Sixth Street in town, you know, in developed areas with driveways consistently, you know, in our urban areas. Additionally, there's about six thousand cars a day on Hinton. Once again, for a arterial roadway, two-lane arterial roadway with turn lanes, that's actually quite on the low end. The county does continue to look at their intersections, they do an intersection control ranking. I know the Pine Arbor access, existing access to the south of here is going to be added, where they look at crash history, traffic counts, and traffic delays, you know, how long are cars waiting at an intersection? And that's what really drives the installation of a traffic signal. I mentioned, you know, these two access points are set up as likely traffic signals in the future. It is something that would be continued to monitor by the county, and at the appropriate time, when it meets all the warrants, as we call them, it meets the requirements of a signal. That's something that the city and county would work together on. In terms of access routing, I, I know it was made clear that there's really not necessarily the opposition to connect to Pine Arbor to the south, but there was a concern that by not connecting to Sixty-Fifth Street, there could be more traffic through Pine Arbor. And I guess I'm, I'm very comfortable saying drivers are, you know, folks who want to take the shortest distance. If someone's looking to get to Sixty-Fifth Street and that access is not there, they frankly are not going to go through the Pine Arbor development. They're going to go up to Hinton, go north, and then get on to Sixty-Fifth. So having or not having a Sixty-Fifth Street access is really secondary and different than access to Seventieth. Really, you'd see more traffic going to the Hinton Avenue exit, but that's one, like I said, that is planned as a full access, and we are following this plan. Also, in terms of development to the west, and whether they have access to Seventieth and Sixty-Fifth, really, this area has developed, call it eighty-acre blocks, it's a forty-acre block adjacent to Sixty-Fifth, a forty-acre block adjacent to Seventieth. And those forty-acre blocks to the west of here, the northern one has access to Sixty-Fifth, a collector roadway. The southern one has access to Seventieth, so each forty-acre block has one access to a major roadway. This is no different, it's just that has the option of either Sixty-Fifth or Hinton. So we are still providing one full access to a major roadway in this forty-acre block. Like I said, it's just unique where it has that option to go either direction, which is important to note. In terms of, I know there was a mention of stormwater in the ponding, and the, how the pond would increase in size due to the higher density. The existing pond that is there was not planned for any development. That was something the county did back in the 2000s when they upgraded Sixty-Fifth Street strictly to serve the needs at that time. Any development, whether it be all single-family or the much higher-density mixed-use, was going to require expansion of the ponding. There's very strict rules of the city and the watershed and estate level that we follow to make sure that we're meeting those requirements and not impacting any adjacent properties, which is an important consideration here. Just given the area around it is developed, so all those requirements will be met. One other note I do have in terms of traffic, that's kind of unique when you're very much on the low end of the medium-density potential units per acre. Single-family actually has a higher number of trips per unit, at least from a planning perspective. So if you had a strict single-family development, single-family zoning on the higher end, let's say closer to the three or four units per acre, from a planning perspective, that would be more trips than medium-density on the lower end. There's much more cars, or many more cars in a single-family household than a medium-density household. So you actually could see less traffic than if you had a higher-density, single-family development. I think that touches everything that I wrote down. If there's anything, I will certainly can answer those questions.
Thank you, Ryan. One thing I'd like to add on, one more item that we want to talk about too, is the environmental analysis worksheet, EAW. I'd like to turn it over to Ben to talk about that process.
Yes, thanks, Mike. So the EAW process is triggered with two hundred and fifty units in, in any given development, which is the threshold that we utilize in terms of triggering that need. So since this development is under that, it did not trigger that environmental review.
All right. I believe that's all of our talking points that we had following the great public hearing and input from the adjacent residents.
Thank you. Hey, I had a follow-up question for Ryan, just for matter, like point of reference. Can you state what the, you know, like maximum traffic volumes would be on a collector roadway or a Or a um or a a throughway versus, you know, so to put it in perspective, like. What would be the maximum traffic volumes on sixty-fifth or Hinton before, you know, they'd have to to reevaluate the road?
Um Commissioner, uh or Chair Cambada, um I guess the the two sides to that. One, in terms of reevaluating for expansion. Um you know, Hinton Avenue is essentially single lane each direction with turn lanes in this area. Um that can support uh up to fifteen to eighteen vehicles uh per day, and right now it's at six thousand. Um from just a strict capacity standpoint, not that I'm saying it'll have that many cars. Um the other determination is those signals. So. Um it's tough to say exactly from a traffic um average daily traffic standpoint when a signal would be justified. Um but I, as a comparison, you know, looking down at seventieth street, um that roadway is, you know, on the order of. Um just looking right now, about ten thousand vehicles per day. Um and you see those signals that Meadowgrass Avenue and Hardwood Avenue. So. Um you know, six thousand cars a day on Hinton right now. So you're still a little ways away before you'd start to really trigger signals. But certainly there's other considerations. How much side street traffic is there is certainly one.
Alright, thank you. Just to kind of add on to Ryan's point there on the traffic counts, I have on the screen here is Mindots mapping application of the numbers that Ryan was referencing. You look at a commercial node, if you go up to Woodbury at Beeler Burgarns, you can see the significant amounts of trip differences there. Bailey Road has twelve thousand eight hundred trips. Now's in two thousand nineteen. Radio has eleven thousand four hundred. So you can see how much more trips are needed to support a destination retail like this. Um compared to the trips that are currently being generated at this intersection. We're at six thousand. Um and twenty-three hundred, some older numbers here, but still. Significantly increased traffic support that kind of a commercial node. So that's, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Mike. Uh did uh did the applicant have anything else that they'd like to to add before we move on to further comment?
Nope, we do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Do we have any further comment or question from the commission?
Commissioner Frazier, I have a question.
Go ahead.
For staff, whoever wants to take it. Um I know there was some comments about. Um and I think it's on one of the slides um about the development standards for a R-five district versus what the PUD. Or the property is recommending and then a question about why um why the the numbers for the R-five aren't being strictly adhered to? And and what's the purpose of a PUD? Someone on on staff wants to um to to explain that. I know. Some people watching this hearing probably don't deal with stuff like we do all the time and understand how a PUD works.
Yes, that's a good question, Commissioner. Um generally, if a PUD, um it allows the developer flexibility. From the strict zoning code requirements, but the flexibility has to be within um. Within a certain boundary. It can't be too far over the top and um outside of the boundaries. For example, the applicant here tonight is requesting um some flexibility with the lot area. Um their smaller lots are around the seven thousand mark as shown on the highlight area, or the average overall though does meet the requirements of the district. The minimum lot width, for example, is um fifty-five feet. And sixty is requirement. However, they're not doing, they're not setting precedent with this as the city has previously approved projects at that width. So that's another thing we look at too when we look at a PUD is, is this precedent-setting in this give and take? Um. So the city has previously allowed for fifty-five-foot lots and front yard setbacks. Of twenty-five feet is very common in the East Metro and within new developments. Um the front yard setback. Is twenty-five feet from the property line. Generally, then there's a boulevard in front there fifteen feet. So technically, it's about, it's meeting that thirty-foot requirement. However, it's not thirty feet from the property line, it's thirty feet from back of curb. Um give or take, you know, actually more than that if you had, you know, the average is about fifteen feet of right away. Um. And then here too, um the maximum lot coverage is forty-five percent, five percent above the district requirements. Um that is to the denser um, the denser townhome product you see on the site here. However. Um that does take into consideration other measures as well and impervious surface coverage. As far as driveways and other items on the lot. Um so it's kind of a give and take when we look at the PUD for flexibility. Um I don't know if Ben or Emily have anything to add additionally onto that um comment?
No, I think that sums it up well. Um very typical that our developments right now, we're actually going through the. A codification process with their entire zoning code to really update it because um almost every single. Development that comes through is a PUD, meaning that our our zoning ordinance is a little bit outdated in terms of those requirements. And. As Mike stated, this isn't that far off in terms of what uh the requirements are.
Alright, thank you. Additional questions or comment from the commission?
This is Commissioner Rasmussen. I've got a couple of quick questions, please.
Go ahead.
Um. Were several maybe safety concerns voiced uh at the public hearing, pedestrian crossing and and what have you. Uh. Is there, I I know we went through a a plan showing sidewalks and and where they're all located. It looks like they're providing. Quite a few uh, where do the pedestrians? I mean, there, you you can cross Hinton down at the the roundabout to the south. Is there going to be a pedestrian crossing right at Street One on Hinton? Or will they go up to sixty-fifth? How 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 do pedestrians navigate these walking paths?
Yeah, I can address that. I can turn it over to Ryan if he has anything to add. Generally, we like to see pedestrians cross at an intersection. Um most of the time, we do not like to see what's called mid-block crossings, which would be at Street One. Or I believe at sixty-seventh uh adjacent there. Let me turn my cursor here, see my my pointer. Fancy pointer tool here. Um we don't like to see a mid-block car. It's not safe, it's it's not a controlled intersection. So we recommend residents that want to cross the road, go up to the intersection here where there is a control atmosphere. There are stop signs or future improvements of a roundabout or stoplight to help um slow traffic coming through here. We're down here, there's no control, so. Um we probably would not see a crosswalk there or anything supported as there's no control of vehicle movement. Um Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, I can. Um and Mike's right that um especially being a a county road, it is important to cross pedestrians at controlled intersections. So. Um if a signal were to be installed in the future, that would be a controlled intersection, um you know, with pedestrian walkways. Um and really from a destination standpoint, um if you're trying to get to Highlands Park. Um residents have a sidewalk, a trail uh on the west side of Hinton to go down to seventy-street and cross, or if they're going to Sunny Hill Park. Um they can cross up at Hinton Avenue and sixty-fifth street um at the always stop, which is controlled. Um previously, pedestrian access um had some issues in this area. Um however, I believe it was uh twenty eighteen. When the county got a safe routes to school grant to build the trails um on both sides of this property. Um you know, pretty well filling in the access. I know access and crossing of sixty-fifth street was also voiced as a concern. Um that's something that's been talked about at length with the county and the school district and with the turn lanes going in at the. Langdon Hills development across from the elementary school. Um once that's complete, the county has talked about looking into. Um the pedestrian, the potential for like uh enhanced kind of refuge island crossing on sixty-fifth, uh depending how the turn lanes are finalized. Um you may have the option to have like a raised median um crossing to have more direct access from the northern. Properties to the school. Um one of the reasons that hasn't happened is frankly, it's it's not a walking route to school there. Um so even though it would provide better access to the school, it's not something where um the school district promotes walking um to the school in this area.
Appreciate the comments on on pedestrians. Uh. I guess just going through my notes, I had a question on environmental impact statement. I think Ben answered that uh. And then regarding uh the mixed-use zoning, um. You know, I think I'm in line with that. You know, my my understanding of mixed use is it uh can provide a variety of uses, uh residential being one of them. So. Although I'd love to see uh. Cool business or or what have you go in there. It's it's not what we have in front of us and and I feel that residential is. Part of mixed use. So I I I agree with uh where we're at with with that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rasmussen. Any additional question or comment? Seeing none, I would look for a motion. Seeing no motion, I will motion. I motion to improve the comprehensive plan amendment, zoning plan amendment. And preliminary plat subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report. Do you have a second?
Second from Commissioner Frazier.
I have a second from Commissioner Frazier. Uh further discussion. Uh quick question for the director. Do we have to uh do roll call on each of these individually or do we just vote on the singular motion?
Mr. Chair, if everybody's in agreement with the recommendations for the conditions of the report, we can do all three with one motion.
Alright, thank you. Uh again, further discussion. Um personally, I, when I, when I saw the twenty forty comp plan, I was intrigued by the opportunity to have. Business in this um on this parcel. Uh high-density housing is something that the city. Uh has needed for a long time. So I'm happy to see that developers are coming to the table, um at least with that component of it. Uh however, in light of reading the uh analysis that was provided by the applicant. And in light of the fact that there's no other applicant, you know, wanting to develop this parcel. Um I'm inclined to agree with uh Commissioner Rasmussen that um, you know, high-density housing is one. One component of mixed use. Uh so I feel like this is in line with um how the twenty forty comp plan sought to use this parcel. Um with that, if you've got no further comment, I will turn it over to the director for a motion. Ryan, I'm sorry for a roll call.
There is somebody that has their hand raised too. Commissioner Cambada or Chair Cambada.
Uh Director. Yep, uh with uh Director Boyk, with uh public hearing being um closed, how should I address that?
Um that is completely up to you, Mr. Chair, whether or not you want to reopen it or um proceed with the the motion as is.
Um I'll uh I'll do an informal uh. In in informal from the from the commission, if you'd like to to reopen the public hearing or not. State your name.
Mr. Bigum, I'm in favor of reopening the public hearing.
Okay.
Commissioner Rasmussen, yes, yay.
Yes, for me too, Commissioner Fisher.
Alright, Evan?
I I would say we have a motion. We've spent a long time. I think Mister, let me check who it is. I think Mister. Brown had a chance to speak before. Um I think we're, I'm ready to move on. Um I think we've heard what we need to hear on this.
Um I concur with Commissioner Frazier. So at this point, I'd uh I'd like to move move to a roll call.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh Chair Cambada.
I.
Commissioner Frazier.
I.
Commissioner Bigum.
Nay.
Commissioner Fisher.
Nay.
Commissioner Kenable. Commissioner Kenable, are you there?
Hi.
And Commissioner Rasmussen.
Hi.
Alright, motion carries four to two. Moving on to item six point three, Weber property opidium cases ZA two zero two one dash zero two seven. PP two zero two one dash zero two eight, SP two zero two one dash zero two nine. With Matt Wolf presenting.
Thank you, Commissioner Cambada and planning commissioners. Uh before you today, last month, you received a planning application for the Weber parcel. By Opden Development. The application was for the rezoning with the plan you development to file, follow R-six high-density standards. A site plan review and additionally a preliminary plat. Uh the location of the site that is being proposed is an eight point four five acres that is owned by the Weber uh estate. That is where the the parcel gets its name. It is directly north of the shops at Cottage uh or shops of uh Gateway North. Um in between Hardwood Avenue and Harkness Avenue, and then to the north, there is additionally an open uh vacant site. A little bit of a history on the site and additionally the Harkness Avenue area. In October of twenty seventeen. Uh this area was modified in terms of its land use uh planned for fifty-five acres. If you look to the map to the right, you'll see. Uh all the area uh to the east of Harkness Avenue was rezoned to medium-density residential. Whereas to the left, um that area between Harkness and Hardwood was uh, land use was changed to high-density residential. The main reason for this change is again was for increased housing options as part of our strategic plan. As well as it's close proximity to Eightieth Street Commercial District. Uh when this uh land use was uh changed and that amendment was passed by resolution, uh there were no stipulations that were placed on the development land. Uh and as the resolution was for a comprehensive plan amendment only, uh so there was no EAW or EIS that was required by state statute at time of approval. Uh land use then with Adam change and part of the twenty forty comprehensive plan does guide this uh acreage to be high-density. Which uh per our comp plan does call for twenty to forty units per acre. Uh there currently what is proposed by Opden is twenty point two units per acre. Um right now, as part of that, we would be, they would be proposed rezoning it from the R-two residential estate and the UR Urban Reserve. A zoning classification because the site is uh divided by two different zoning classifications. And it becoming uh a unified zoning classification of R-six high-density residential. Us, talking about site access and overall site layout, uh the site is again a one hundred and seventy-unit apartment building. We would be um proposing as part of this or would be required the developer put in right and left-hand turn lanes along Hardwood Avenue. Hardwood Avenue would be the main access for the entire site for the hundred and seventy-one building or a hundred and seventy-one units. Additionally. On Harkness Avenue, there would be required to have an emergency access with knockdown boulevard. So. So there would be no uh through traffic that would be part of Harkness Avenue. It would be only for emergency personnel, fire, police. Uh ambulance, things of that nature. Additionally, on the west side, you can see uh the two basins for water management, stormwater management. Uh the site would also have a hundred and forty-five underground parking spots that would run um. Throughout the building on the lower level. Additionally, there'd be a hundred and sixty-two surface parking spaces as well. In order to meet our zoning standards additionally, these two bumpouts that you see here on the south of the property. Would require or do have thirty-three additional spots to meet our city code. Those would not be included. Um additionally, but they are proof of parking. So if parking does become an issue, uh the developer would have to uh install those and construct them. Currently, uh and additionally, the neighborhood meeting for this site was held April fifteenth uh twenty twenty-one. Just to give you a quick unit count and layout, uh this is the first floor. Overall, the building uh would have a hundred and seventy-one units with twenty-four of them being studio. Seventy-eight being one bed, one-bedroom units, eight being one-bedroom plus ten, forty-nine being two-bedroom and twelve being three-bedroom. In terms of trails and sidewalks, uh with the addition of that right turn lane and the addition of that left turn lane. Hardaway Avenue Trail, the trails that do long and on Hardwood Avenues would be have to, the developer would be required to completely rebuild, redevelop those to the city specification. Additionally, uh, the sidewalk connection, uh, would be made southbound into the Eightieth Street Commercial District, which is a little bit hard to see on the map. Uh, but, uh, that southbound connection would be made and that sidewalk does run. Uh, throughout the units to connect in order to get connection into that commercial district. Uh, as well, one of the things I didn't point out that I did want to quickly point out is part of that preliminary pat. That is in the future, as Harkness area continues to develop, we would be reconstructing Harkness Avenue right now. Right now, it doesn't, isn't able to hold the traffic, uh, needed. So, um, we are dead, we are directing, uh, traffic to Hardwood Avenue. So that plat would dedicate forty feet of right away along the east side of the, the property, uh, for that future reconstruction. So currently we don't have a future northbound sidewalk, but as part of that reconstruction. We would be requiring that be developed and that is part of, uh. Uh, what we're working through and would be, would be included in a, a future assessment. Landscaping tree preservation, open space, uh, the developer is required of ninety over story deciduous trees. Currently, they are providing a hundred and ninety seven on the site plan. They are required to have eighteen coniferous trees. They are providing thirty three. And there would be four hundred and seventy four shrubs required and they are providing five hundred and ninety six. Overall, the site has currently through a, a tree, uh, inventory process. We found that the site has seven hundred and forty three qualifying trees. In total, the developer will be removing four hundred and seventy seven of those trees. And keeping two hundred and sixty six of those trees with the primary being on the west side, uh, facing Hardwood and on the south side of the property. Uh, with those trees, the four hundred and seventy seventy being removed, Opaden per our city code will be required to put in. Ninety two thousand, one hundred dollars in tree mitigation free, uh, fees as a result of that tree loss. Uh, architecture, although currently we don't have, uh, an architecture requirement for residential, uh, in, within the city. One of the things that we are requiring as part of this process is they meet at least forty percent of our classroom materials. Per our commercial building code, which that qualifies as glass, stone, copper panels or other mirror window panels. Uh, further based on the feedback that the council provided as part of a concept plan workshop. Uh, one of the things that they really liked from a, a previous project, which we'll get to in a second, is some. Other wood like paneling materials that was had, uh, on that, on that project. So developer is also additionally adding seventeen percent of that wood like paneling to the project. So with the total of both of those forty percent and seventeen percent, the project will have a fifty percent, seven percent. Of exterior premium, premium materials. If you look at the, the projects below, you can see, um, the highest is. Grove eighty at forty two percent. So one of the things we really wanted to make certain with this product. Project and, uh, its location is that we had a very high quality exterior finish, uh, with this and the developer is complying. With, uh, some of the highest, uh, exterior material in terms of premium products, uh, that we've seen in recent, uh, high density projects. So to give you an example of, uh, the elevations, here's the east elevation that is looking as if you were looking to the site from. Harkness Avenue, the west elevation is if you're looking to the site from Hardwood Avenue. And what you'll see is the south, uh, part of the building. That's where you'll see that cultured stone. This brownish texture that will be those wood like, uh, paneling materials. And then of course. Uh, the glass windows throughout. That's what makes up that fifty seven percent of those premium materials. Uh, and then you'll see the south elevation here. That's, uh, from the backside of is if you're looking for shops at Gateway North. And then to give you an example of that wood example, this is a low of forty six. This is the project they did. Um, in Minneapolis, Opaden completed. And that's just to, so you have an example of what that wood like paneling looks like and a finished product there. Uh, we did have the developer complete some cross sections, so they were able to see, um, exactly. Uh, what the building would look like from different points of view. Uh, this first project, uh, viewpoint is from. Just in front of the shops at Gateway North, you can see the upper parapets of the building. They're just above, um, the shops. Additionally, then this is a view, uh, off of Harkness is if you were coming out of one of the driveways and looking into that entryway area, uh, again. Uh, you can see those exterior materials. Then looking from across Hardwood and as you go up the hill, this, this is a view from Meadow Grass Cove. Um, what you can see is that. Um, the finished product or finished floor elevation is eight forty six going up another fifty seven feet. We sit at the top of the building about nine hundred and three feet. Uh, so you can see, uh, in the summer and spring, uh, with full vegetation, the project won't be viewable from there, but obviously. Uh, it will be slightly viewable, um, as that falls in the winter months, but the, the houses there still sit above that roof line. Um, looking down onto the site. Additionally, then looking at Aspen Grove, again, nine hundred and three feet finish, uh. Finished floor relations of house at about nine thirty. So the project, uh, the houses there would be looking down. Uh, again, with full foliage in summer, in, in spring, it will be harder to see, uh, but again, with winter months, those will be, uh, something that is visible. Uh, and then finally, the view from Hardwood as you're walking on, looking up, you could see the apartment building there as well, just to give you an example. Of, uh, the viewpoint from Hardwood as you're walking on those trails. So with that, there are three recommendations before you today for that, um. Zoning amendments as well as the site plan review and a preliminary plat. We do have the applicant, applicant here, Paul Tucci with Opaden Development is here to answer. Followed questions about amenities or any other project specifications. Other than that, I will turn it over to the planning commissioners and, uh, Chair Kamada for comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Uh, does the applicant have anything that they'd like to add?
Sorry about that. I had to get myself off of mute. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for, uh, having us tonight. Uh, my name is Paul Tucci. I'm the executive vice president of development for Opadan. Uh, I'll take two minutes, if you don't mind, to just make sure everyone knows who we are. Opadan is a, uh. Minneapolis, we're actually based in Excelsior Development Company, uh, thirty years we've been around, um. Uh, founded by Joe Ryan. Uh, I've been with Opadan coming up on twenty five years, um. And, uh, we are developers of multiple types of property, uh, retail. Uh, industrial, uh, data centers, uh, we, we do senior housing. We've done a lot of, uh, multi-family housing. Uh, we've actually some, done some land development, uh, lots for single family homes. Uh, so we have a wide breadth of, uh, what we do. Um, I would, uh, just like to add a couple of things. Um, that, uh, the, the rezoning that we're asking for, uh, is to the high density residential, as Matt said, in compliance with the. Approved comprehensive plan that was, uh, approved by the commission and council, uh, just recently. So. We are, we are not asking to change the comprehensive plan. We're zoning to what was approved in the comprehensive plan. Um, couple other things that I would, uh, just, um, reference really quick on. The, the site itself is there's about a, uh, depending on where you're standing on Harkness and. Down to Hardwood, there's a forty to fifty foot drop across the site going east to west. Uh, Hardwood sitting much lower than Harkness. I think everyone probably knows that, but I thought I would, uh, just reference that. Uh, there are a, uh, there are, uh, five, as you run up Harkness on the east side, there are. Uh, five, I believe, maybe six homes, um, that are up there. I'm just counting real quick. One, two, three, four, five. I think there's just the five. That in, in the overall guide plan were designated, uh, eventually to become, um. Medium density residential. There's a thought about villas and townhomes over there. And, uh, on between Harkness and Hardwood, the lots that are vacant, uh, one of which we're buying the Weber parcel. Those parcels were designated to have a little higher density and, and I think there was a plan with just over four hundred apartment units on there. Uh, I think that's, uh, it's going to be hard to get four hundred on there with the site conditions there. Um, but, uh, just to point out that that's what's there. Um. And then, uh, as Matt said, we've been working with staff, uh, on the exterior. Uh, we, we did, uh, um. Add a, it's a Nietzsche ha panel. That's a brand name. It's, it's a, it's a faux wood grain. It's a, it's a, a good looking. Uh, product, uh, that kind of brings that wood look into it. That's the brown that Matt showed you. On the site. Uh, I'd also like to hit on parking real quick. Matt did reference, we do have about one point eight two. Stalls per unit with the paved area. We do have the thirty three proof of parking. On the south side of the building, we can actually do more on the other side of the driveway. Uh, what we've found in, uh, we're, we're doing, we're under construction about halfway through a project in West St. Paul had the same issue. Uh, we, we believe and feel that our history shows that in a setting like this, y- you need about one point seven. Uh, ish to adequately serve not only the residents, but the guests that are coming in. We're at about one point eight two and with the thirty three, we can get to the city mandated two stalls per unit. We can actually go beyond that if needed, but we, we think that with the stalls we have shown. We will have adequate parking. Um, we did have a neighborhood meeting, uh, I think we, we talked to the, to the folks who are on the east side of Harkness. Uh, and we had a number of the residents that are on the west side of Hardwood. Over by Camel's Hump Park on Aspen Cove and Burrows. Um, and, uh, we, we did have, you know, there were discussions about traffic and as Matt mentioned, we are adding. Um, turn lanes both ways to make sure that there's a smooth flow down Hardwood. I would point out that, uh, roughly speaking, the closest house over on Aspen Cove. Is, is almost a thousand feet away if you draw a straight line from where our building is to where they're, the back of that house is. Um, and their, their elevation, as we showed in the cross section, is higher than our building. So, you know, half of the year with the tree, well, with the trees, you're, you're not going to see much of anything. And even. In the, the months where the foliage is off, i- i- you know, I'm guessing people aren't sitting out in their backyards too much. Uh, during the winter, uh, but i- i- it'll, i- i- it's a long way to look across. You're, you're at a fifth of a mile. Thereabouts, uh, looking across there. So, um, just wanted to, uh, mention that and then I will, uh, be available for any questions that the commission has. Uh, and I'll be taking, uh, notes as the, uh, public makes comments so we can answer those to our best ability. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Alright, with that, we will go ahead and open public hearing. Prior to opening public hearing, I'll give instructions again on how to participate. You have one of two options. You may use the, you may post a question using the Q and A option. If you post a question, I'll state the question to the planning commission and staff and we will address the questions accordingly. Uh, you, you may also use the raise my hand option. If you wish to verbally ask a question. Please test your devices, microphone prior to selecting the raise my hand option to assure that you'll be heard. Um, I'll then call on you by name and ask the question. Please understand that once the question has been asked, you'll be muted. If you have follow up questions, please reselect the raise my hand option to ask additional questions. And with that, we will open public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against may do so. I'd like to remind everyone that in the interest of, um, observing everyone's time, we'd like to keep comment to three minutes per person. Checking with the director, I'm not seeing any. Oh, we've got a. Raise my hand from. Greg Jezzretz. Director, if you can go ahead and unmute him.
Sure. Alright, Greg, you should be set if you unmute yourself.
Yes, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, hey, um, yeah, Greg Jezzretz, I'm at seven five zero one Meadow Grass Cove, so kind of up on the, the hill to the west there. So. Um, I, hopefully this is just a, a first question to get us started here, but the, uh. Uh, you know, with the inclusion of these units and then the units that are going in on Eightieth Street and then what we just heard about over by the. Um, Cottage Grove Elementary and stuff, I, I, can somebody comment on the traffic? Um, and how the area right there by Coles and Ivy and that intersection that already appears to be. Pretty full and has accidents regularly is going to handle all those people.
Ryan, are you able to, to address that question?
Yep. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the commission, um, I guess a couple, looking at Hardwood Avenue. Um, you know, traffic in that area is about forty two hundred cars a day on the north end and eighty six hundred cars a day on the south end. So. Um, you know, from a general capacity standpoint, design of Hardwood Avenue. Um, well within the bounds and, and allows for future growth, which we did plan for, um, with this comprehensive plan. Um, specifically at the intersections that continue, uh, does monitor and will continue to monitor. Um, specifically more as you go further south where Hardwood Court and Coles, um, comes out. Um, you know, for a future expansion and having a signal there. Um, and then potentially in the future where Harkness Avenue, um, would meet Eightieth Street as well. So. Um, really to address, you know, access from side streets, you're looking at traffic signals in the future to provide that. Um, in terms of Eightieth Street itself, um, there was, uh, improvements to that back in two thousand and seventeen with the Hy-Vee project. Um, where we added turn lanes on East Point Douglas Road and we lengthened the turn lanes on Eightieth Street. Um, certainly there's times, peak times where that is a, a busy area, but, um, nothing out of the ordinary for that. You know, type of, of major roadway. Um, there's a lot of traffic that comes off of Highway sixty one there and that's something that we continue to plan for. Um, as well.
And Chair Kamada, just to add to Director Verfand, in terms of the site itself, what we're, uh, working on is. Uh, per unit, we're expecting about four trips per unit. That adds about eight hundred and fifty four trips on to that. Uh, eight thousand, seven hundred traffic count that we're really seeing at the high end of, um, hardwoods. So still within that, uh, collector. Uh, I think as Mr. Director Verfand pointed out, uh, a limit for the road.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Greg, does this, does this answer your question?
Oops, I apologize. I just un, or muted him. So Greg.
Say if you wanted to.
Yeah.
Greg, did you have any follow up to that?
Um, I mean, sure, it's, the stats all say that, right? I guess it's, it's just one of those things where it's like, you see it now. Where people have to wait two lights to get into the Hy-Vee, the very short little section of road where it curves. Right? Um, during the busy times, right? There are definitely times when it's handling everything just fine. Um. But I just, I don't, it's hard to believe, I guess, is what I'll say.
You know, I, I can, I can empathize with you anytime. We talk about, uh, increasing density or increasing traffic flow, everyone, um. Everyone has the same concern as how, how much worse is it going to get or how much more is there going to be? When, you know, certain roads are, are built to certain standards and, you know, um, you know, my road's pretty quiet. Or it's a, it's a call to sack. If anyone ever go through there. Traffic might increase. However, the, the road was built for that traffic flow. It's just, it's not what I'm used to. Um, so there's. There are legitimate concerns there, but the city does a really good job. And trying to plan for future use. So although levels are increasing. Not to an unmanageable level is the idea. And I guess I'll leave that, that question with that. Um, do we have any? Do we have any other participants who would like to speak for or against? Uh, Director, I'm not seeing anything in the Q and A or any other, uh, hands up. Can you confirm that?
Uh, it looks like Greg raised his hand once again here.
Oh, alright, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, hey, sorry, um, I just, I don't want this to pass without the questions, um, asked here. So I'm going to keep going until somebody else jumps in. So, um, can somebody also kind of, so with all the high density and all of the apartments and everything, I guess I've never really heard. I, I think, um, somebody had said that it was needed, like Cottage Grove needed high density. Like, why do we need it? What is the? What is the reasoning for it? Like, are we getting money for it? Are we?
I will, I'll turn that over to staff here to initiate that question and then I can give some insight as well. Go ahead, Steph.
Chair Kamada, thank you. So one of the things that we do every year is we do a business retention and expansion program. And we talk to area businesses and one of the things that they have brought up and at least a couple of times we've heard it from Warner Electric, Newby Anderson, Hy-Vee, is that we have an entry level workforce here that is not looking for single family homes. Additionally, they might be looking for short time housing. They can't afford the market currently for those single family homes. So they are looking for their entry level staff to find high density homes where, or apartment buildings where they can move in and start. Additionally, on the other side of things, what we're hearing from people who are retiring, who live in single family homes in the community is they want the opportunity to sell their house, be able to live in an apartment in the summer months, be able to shut the door, lock it, get in their vehicle, drive south and live there during the winter and then come back. So it's kind of offering again, that full slate of housing for both our workforce as well as those looking to transition out of single family homes.
Thank you. To kind of extrapolate on what Matt said, having a real estate background, it's, it's difficult to grow a community without like a full life cycle of housing. So as residents start out, they've got lower income. They also have different needs. As they grow into families, they need larger housing, more space. That's where, you know, being in proximity to schools becomes important and so on. And then again, when they retire, now that they've put down roots here, they don't need a five or six bedroom house anymore, but they want to stay in the community. And we, we severely lack the type of housing that would attract somebody who's not ready for an assisted living facility, but needs something that doesn't require a lot of maintenance and fits within their budget. So we have a disproportionate amount of middle to higher income housing stock or housing stock that meets their needs and disproportionately low amount of housing stock that meets the needs of people who are either just starting out or maybe downsizing their life to, to fit, you know, their, their retirement lifestyle. So there's an overwhelming demand for affordable housing and rental housing from both young and old. So that's, that's the feedback that I get, at least, you know, serving our community as, as a real estate professional.
Yeah, sure. No, I, and I, I get that, right? You gotta have that. I guess I'll go back to some of the comments that were made in the earlier discussions about the choice of where, right? So like there's beautiful green spaces in Cottage Grove that we all love. There's a ton of open field space to the east, right? Like why, why do it here, right? There's, there's, there's places to develop. I guess that's, that's my parting comment on that and you can, can take it or leave it.
Again, I think we kind of touched on this with the previous application. One of the, several of the economic factors that are going to drive a development like this are going to be proximity to highways and public transit. So the, the quick answer to that last question about why not to the east is primarily at this point, there's no mass transit serving it. And it's kind of a chicken and egg scenario. We are not going to have mass transit serving the eastern portion of Cottage Grove until there's adequate density. So that, that development is going to happen slower over time. And as, as the demographic changes there, it's going to warrant increased infrastructure and increasing the need for mass transit there. However, currently in, in the, in the near term, there's no, there's no plans for mass transit in that corridor of Cottage Grove. So that's going to disqualify really any type of development of this size and scope in, in that region.
I would suggest that that becomes part of the plan.
It is in our comprehensive plan for 2040. Unfortunately, we would have to look to council to, and I know they're working on some solutions. There's already like a rapid, a once a week bus route that helps to serve some of our lesser travel areas of the city. But that, that is a, a complex problem to solve, Greg. But you are absolutely correct that that is something that needs to be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think we had comment here from Denise Fulmer, "The size of the development seems out of character with the balance of the neighborhood. I'm not against high density housing, but question if this is the correct location of, for something of this scale." Is that something that staff could touch on? As far as, is why this area was guided for high density, maybe?
Sure.
Oh, go ahead, Matt.
Oh, sure, Chair Kamada, I can touch on that. So one of the things in planning, just in general, is we generally like to see a general change from commercial to high density, medium density to, to low density. The location of this obviously being right next to commercial is greatly, one of the things we saw was the potential for it to support, or is, is support that commercial. Additionally, in the future, is one of the things we just touched upon is transportation. There is plans for a bus rapid transit station down across 80th Street and seeing the opportunity for residents to utilize that, this area as well, to cross down into that and potentially utilize it to get into surrounding communities for jobs that would access as part of that bus rapid transit station. I think all those components, and again, the, the opportunity to do a full range of housing. One of the things that has been very cognizant with the Harkness small area is that we wanted this to be market rate. We wanted a higher end product and that's one of the things we held out for. In fact, there was other developers that were interested in the site that were not market rate. And it's been something that we want, the city wanted to hold strong on for this area. And I think this is finally one of the products that we're now getting with opulent ears, the market rate apartments.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. Additional questions or comment? Anyone's wanting to speak for or against?
Mr. Chair, it looks like Greg is ready to stand again.
I was just going to say that. Let's get him back on.
I'm sorry, and I hope I'm, I just want to make, I just want to make sure we keep going here before this goes up for the vote. So there was somebody that couldn't attend tonight that I think would have asked a question around this. And you have to pardon my inability to articulate it well. But I know back a couple of years ago when we did attend the, I think it was the planning commission, our council meeting where this, the full on strip of land was proposed to be rezoned to high, high density or medium density to high density from what it is now. There were, I believe at the time, we were told that nothing would happen unless everybody on that street sold. And I believe that came up in the meeting that we had with a developer a week or so ago. And I guess we're all, everybody that was at that meeting and maybe the folks that, that live on that street there too are feeling this as well. That, you know, it, it feels like now it's going to come in in chunks, which is really going to kind of push those people. Hopefully not, but it will tend to maybe push people out and then the rest of it will get developed. And that wasn't what we heard at the council meeting a couple of years ago.
Chair Kamada, I can take that if.
Please do, man.
So I think a couple of points. One of the things with the Harkness area is due to the high density nature. I think one of the discussion points at the time was that in order for a, you know, a development this big, there's potential that parcels would have to be combined and that this was completely market driven, which currently it still is. None of the Harkness area is being forced. It's all completely up to the landowners that control the underlying land if they wish to sell or not. In this case, the Weber family is looking to sell. So that's what's driven this forward. I believe one of the things the Homer here is referring to in August of 2017, when the amendment was brought before Planning Commission, one of the planning commissioners and what was passed before Planning Commission, that amendment was added that basically said that they would like to see some sort of percentage of development required for both the east and west side of Harkness. So meaning the high density area would have to have some, certain percentage of acreage to path, to move forward with development. And then the west side would have to as well. That did pass five to zero in August 2017 for the Planning Commission. However, that recommendation did not move forwards to city council and was not part of the resolution. I can go ahead and, I, I would like to just for the record, read that summary of why that occurred. So based on that resolution that was before, in November 2017, it stated, "The planning commission's request that staff consider adding criteria language related to options of alternative percentages of land assemblages within the study area needed in order to process free zoning and development application was considered. And it was determined that the market and economic feasibility of a project will dictate the land assemblage required and is outside the scope of reasonable land use requirements. The city already has adequate zoning protections in place to ensure that development occurs in a planned and thoughtful manner with safeguards for the surrounding properties. So no additional condition was added to the resolution approval." So that answers that question.
That, that sounds like an attorney wrote it.
Yeah, okay. You need to do that again in something that the rest of us can understand.
So essentially what that summary is saying that although that amendment was put forward by the Planning Commission, essentially due to market and economic feasibility, the, the market will dictate. Basically, essentially they're saying we can't dictate that one landowner would like to sell while the other one does not. So we can't say that landowner cannot sell because the other landowner will. So that would not allow that movement to move forward. And what it's saying is that we already have land use law and regulations, both through the state of Minnesota and the city of Cottage Grove that would permit or deny land use applications and developments from moving forward and that we can't put an arbitrary percentage on landowners.
Thank you. Greg, I feel like you're speaking for the whole neighborhood here. Do you have any other questions before we move on?
That is everything that, that I had on my agenda.
Can, can say, you know, with regard to any sort of percentage requirement. From a property owner's rights standpoint, if I was a landowner and I wanted to sell, I would not want to be constrained by my neighbor's lack of willingness to sell. That in and of itself, had that passed, could have been grounds for a lawsuit against the city for acting in an arbitrary and capricious manner. So that, when I said that the attorney, that sounds like an attorney wrote it, that's kind of what I was implying is I think, I'm, I'm sure the council approached the attorney about that and that's probably kind of how they drew that conclusion is that maybe the, we're not within their legal right to do that. With that, do we have anybody else who wishes to speak on the application? Seeing none, we will close public hearing. Do we have additional questions or comments from the commission?
Commissioner Rasmussen here. I, I think I've got two questions, maybe one for the applicant, one for staff.
Go ahead.
I'll start with the staff. Could you, and, and maybe I missed this in the report, I apologize, but how, how do we sit on parking for this project? I, I heard a little bit of conversation, but I wanted to just clarify. Per our zoning standards, are we providing enough parking? I, I thought I heard two cars per unit possibly.
Commissioner Asmussen, per our, our city code, we do require two cars per unit. Right now with the parking, here, let me, sorry, I'm on the wrong slide for parking, but I get off a couple. Right now for parking, we do have 145 underground parking units that sit below the first level here of the actual building. And then additionally, we have 162 surface parking, which are these right here that you see in front of the building. There is proof of parking with, for an additional 33 spaces. Those won't be constructed immediately. But again, if they are needed, that will be something that the developer will be required to do at a later time. So with all of that parking, it does equal two units or two parking spaces per unit.
All right. I appreciate that. One more question, please. I, I know we've got a lot of elevation and grade changes around this area and some of the areas to the, is it east, might be up quite high. And, and I know we've got five or six homes kind of looking down on this in the wintertime. They might get a, a shot of the roof of the building. And then looking long term, you know, if that ever develops into a higher density use. I'm curious to know, I, I guess from the applicant, what type of mechanical equipment, rooftop units? What are we going to see on this roof? I'm not completely familiar with this type of construction and how much equipment might be on that roof. Is there going to be any, any reason for screening in the future? Things like that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'll jump in. Matt, if you could throw the elevation up. That would be great. Just scroll down to that. And then I'm going to also, Mr. Chairman, if you're okay, I'm going to try to hit on a couple of other things that I heard. But to the commissioner's question, it's hard to see, but if you, Matt, if you kind of zoom in on one of the units, if you could, so you can see.
Oh, can I?
Sure.
Can I stop you real quick? I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Are you, can you turn up your volume at all?
Yeah. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. The Italian guy just needs to talk a little louder. That's usually never a problem. If you look on the elevation that Matt has, I'll point you to, if you look between the windows, you'll see a little what looks like a grate. That's actually the exhaust vent. Each of the units has, they refer to them as magic packs. It's, it's, you, you've seen it, I'm sure a hundred times. It, it, it's a self-contained furnace and air conditioning unit in each unit. So there really isn't a, a, like in a retail environment where you're going to have a bunch of rooftop units running and blowing. There will be some vent pipes that come up for venting of bathrooms and, and the such. On the back of the building, Matt, if you could kind of down on the main level where the garage is, bring your arrow down, Matt, and kind of show, yeah, run across. You can see those same grates at the, at the garage level. Those are vents. We do have a makeup air system in the garage to make sure we get the exhaust out of the garage. You don't want to walk in there and get asphyxiation. You know, that's a typical makeup air. There is at the entry, you can kind of see it on the east elevation. There, there's an elevator wheel that'll go up onto the roof, but it's hidden and it'll be incorporated behind that bump up that goes up. And it's, it's designed so it kind of blends in with the building. So again, not, not a typical commercial with a bunch of units on the roof. You will, there are some pipes, but those are painted out and they blend in with the roof. And Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to just, a couple of the questions that came up, I, I wanted just, if I could, hit on a couple of things. There, you know, is it needed? Why here? We have provided to the city a copy of our market study. We did a very extensive market study. Maxfield does our studies. And the, you know, it showed in the primary trade area, which cuts in to Cottage Grove and Newport and, and even a little bit of Inver Grove Heights. There's a, there, even with everything that is under construction and planned and approved in those communities, there's still demand for 2,000 units. And we are absorbing less than 10% of that demand here. And the why here, as you so aptly put it, the, the public transportation, but not only that, the walkability to amenities, you know, there's a number of restaurants that are within a five minute walk, you know, including the Culvers, the Mexican restaurant. There's a Chipotle, so coffee shop with caribou sitting there. So that, that's also why here versus, you know, we did look at some land down by the Walmart. And as you aptly put it, that will get developed. It's just the, the amenity for the residents aren't there to warrant that what you, what, you know, these are nice. know, these are nice units and this is not affordable housing. This is market rate and, you know, these are these are rents that are deserving of the amenity packages you talked about. And then just I just wanted to just hit one more thing. And for Greg, that, you know, I agree with what the chair said about if I owned a lot and they were tying me to somebody else. And I have talked to our attorney and they agree with that. But we are developing roughly of the high density zoned properties, the three parcels to the north of us aggregate to just about the same size of as ours. So we have about fifty percent of the high density going under here in our eight and a half acres. So I just wanted to touch on those. Thank you for for letting me answer those and I'm available for other questions.
Thank you, sir. All right. Additional questions or comment from the commission?
This is Commissioner Bigum. I guess adding to Commissioner Rasmussen's note about parking, can we go back to the, I guess it would be the aesthetic of the building, some of those renderings with the lighting? Can we talk about that just as far as the lighting for what, you know, the proposal looks like for residents in their parking areas, but then also for the community and the public walkways?
Commissioner Bigum, the lighting will be required to follow our city code, which is no more than point five candlelight at the parcel line for the surrounding parcel. So right now, per the plan that was submitted, there is one light that does still need to be adjusted that we have that I know Apodan is working on and Paul himself is working on to make sure that we get that those candlelights down to point five. Of course, with the lights coming out of the actual apartment units, that still might spill over. But in terms of the actual parking lighting, that will be required to be point five at all parcel lines. In terms of the lighting for the trails or the sidewalks, that will currently be what is existing within the right of way. For ours, I know, I'm not sure if, I don't know, Public Works Director Burfind has an idea, I'm not sure what exists currently there for those trails.
Yep, I can answer that, Matt. So I guess really the the main trail corridor is that along Hardwood Avenue, and that does have lighting that was installed in twenty fourteen along the roadway.
Thank you.
I have one follow-up question regarding the parking as well. If there's the additional thirty-three parking spots, is it the applicant's anticipation that they can meet the needs of the complex without having the entire two parking spots per unit? Is that their reasoning for not developing those additional parking spots from the onset?
Matt, would you like me to answer that?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, yes, we, as I mentioned earlier, we have one point eight two stalls per unit with the parking that we're going to provide. We have our third-party consultants. Again, I will point to a couple other suburban deals that we've done. We feel that having right in the neighborhood of one point seven is kind of that sweet spot that works, provides enough parking for the facility and enough parking for the guests. You know, keep in mind that we do have twenty-four studio units and seventy-eight one-bedroom units. So you have a hundred and two units where our consultants would tell you that at least fifty percent of those units will only have one vehicle. So it's our intention to put in the parking and Matt, if you would just kind of show where we're putting the parking in, just take your pointer around the picture you have on the screen. No, that's the show where we're putting it in, please, Matt. The, yeah, right up there. And those stalls on the south now, Matt, if you would go to those, the proof. Two reasons, we, A, we think we are providing adequate parking and B, we can save, there's a bunch of trees that we can save down in that area. We, again, if we need to take those out in the future, we have that. And frankly, we could add parking on the south side of that driveway if we need it even more, but we just don't think we will. And but we wanted to make sure that commission and council saw a plan which gets us to the city required two stalls per unit if need be.
All right. Thank you, Paul. And then my my follow-up to that is, at what point would you make the determination to develop those additional parking spots?
We typically will be, our manager will keep doing interviews with our tenants to make sure that, you know, we're providing the right services, the right things. They will also be watching to see how those lots, those, you know, different areas of the lot, I should say, fill up. And it's it's the onsite management team through just observation and ongoing questionnaires to the tenant that will say, yeah, you know what, we're having trouble with guest parking, we need to add those stalls. But again, we don't, history has kind of shown that we're in a good spot at that one point eight two and we will be able to get to two point O if needed. But again, we don't think we're going to need that. But we we have the ability to do it if we need it or if the city says, put them in.
All right. Thank you, sir. I did see some some comments in chat and I did see one hand raised. I am not going to reopen public hearing, however, anyone who has follow-up questions that we'd like to wrap up, if you state the question in the Q and A, I will read those questions and make sure that they get addressed in the interest of being fair to the people who are in attendance, but also to be fair for observant of time for everyone involved. So I'll I'll open this back up for commissioners to ask questions or comment. And then anybody in attendance who still had a follow-up question, if you could just put it in Q and A real quick, I'll make sure it gets addressed. Further questions or comment from the commission?
One last question from Rasmussen. Can you confirm that all trash is and pickup service and what have you are contained within the principal structure? There will be no trash enclosures or anything of that sort?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Matt, do you have our floor plans handy or you want me to try and share my screen and show?
Um.
Well, I'll answer it this way, Mr. Commissioner. The the trash, oh, thank you, Matt, go to the garage level if you could, if you have that.
I only have the first level.
Okay. In in, well, you can see if Matt, if you would point right by the over to the left-hand side, lower left, in the yellow, move over lower left, lower left, Matt. Right, just to the right there, you see those two darker spots? Those are trash chutes just above and to the right of where your arrow is, right, right there. Those are those are trash chutes. Then we have the same thing now, if you go to the right, Matt, you can see the two trash chutes right there. Those go into trash that's inside the garage. If you had the garage, we have provided the garage floor plan. In that garage floor plan, you'll see where the you can see where the trash comes down. Then on trash day, they roll them to the end of, they actually, management will push their rolling bins. They bring them down to the end of the garage where the garage door is and the trash person can roll them out, dump them in the truck, and then they go back into those areas. So everything is contained within the building in the garage.
Good to hear. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do we have additional questions or comment? Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
Commissioner Frazier, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning amendment and the site plan and the preliminary plat subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the zoning amendment, preliminary plat and site plan, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report from Commissioner Frazier. Do we have a second?
Second from Commissioner Knabel.
A second from Commissioner Knabel. Further discussion? Seeing none, I will turn it over for roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Aye.
Commissioner Knabel?
Aye.
Commissioner Bigum?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Aye.
And Chair Kamada?
Aye. Motion carries five to one. Moving on to item six point four. I know it's been a long night, guys. Before we move on to application six point four, do we need to take another short recess? Consensus is no?
No, thank you.
All right, we'll keep moving on. Item six point four, Settlers Bluff cases ZA two zero two one dash zero three zero and preliminary plat PP two zero two one dash zero three one with Director Boyke presenting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can everybody see my screen here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Capstone Homes is requesting approval for a zoning amendment and preliminary plat on thirty-nine point seven acres of land located in the location as shown in the picture here at the southwest corner of Hadley Avenue South and one hundredth Street South. So this proposal is very similar to the proposal that was approved per concept plan level. I believe it was at the planning commission back in January, same product, the Liberty Series detached townhome product is being proposed, which does have an HOA, it'll be HOA maintained in terms of all the lawns, including snow removal for all lots. The concept plan had a total of one hundred fifty-six units. This proposal is one less at one fifty-five. I'll get into the change in terms of the revision, which is particularly due to access here in a minute. But as was stated through the concept plan review, same product that was developed in Ramsey St. or is being developed in Ramsey St. Michael and Handover. This is a new product type for Cottage Grove, being a detached townhome product, again, trying to account for that full spectrum housing, which is initiative by council. And the concept plan was ultimately approved by a city council back on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. So in terms of the first request, the zoning amendment, the property is guided for medium density residential in the twenty forty comp plan, which calls for five to thirteen units per acre. This project is on the very low end of that at four point eight nine units per acre. Now, the property is currently zoned AG two, which is agricultural, and the proposal is to rezone to our five median density, but the planned unit development therefore aligning with the land use and the twenty forty comp plan. I should note that this property is located in the Mississippi River Critical Corridor area in the overlay district. The comp plan calls out those requirements, we're actually going through codification process, the code to align with the DNR ordinance for that overlay district. Being that this parcel's up on a hill and part of the separated from river, that being the orange district, the development standards are very, not very stringent. You have more stringent guidelines as you get closer to the river and some of those other districts. And therefore, this proposal meets those requirements of that overlay district. So in terms of the preliminary plat, slightly new layout, does include public streets. So even though it's detached townhome product, the streets are all public. There is right-of-way dedication for the future realignment of one hundredth Street, which is in the southeast corner here. Outlots AC, D and E will all be HOA maintained, owned and maintained, the exception being Outlot B, which will be for stormwater, will be city-owned. Development standards are the same as was proposed in the concept plan, that being the forty-foot wide lots and five-foot side yard setbacks. Again, our five minimum requirements for single-family homes in the medium-density district are sixty-foot wide lots and seven and a half foot side yard setbacks. This PUD or the request for the PUD would be required to allow the forty-foot lots and the five-foot side yard setbacks. A staff does not believe that this will set a precedent based on the proposed product, that again, being a detached townhome. So one of the requirements being with the five-foot setbacks and ten-foot separation between homes is the venting of the roof, which has to be vertical, which is shown on this depiction here versus a horizontal intake that helps prevent fire hopping between structures. So this is the design that's been approved in those other communities I mentioned and has been reviewed by the city of Cottage Grove Building Official and Public Safety Departments. So in terms of changes from the concept plan, the depiction on the left is the concept plan that showed one access point coming from an extension of Mississippi Dunes Boulevard from the north with the initial access being provided off essentially one hundred third street on the south. In discussing the future realignment of one hundredth Street with the county and looking at potential development options for the parcel to the east, in addition to some comments we heard from the neighbors to the north and concerns with a lot of these residents heading north through via Mississippi Dunes, through Mississippi Dunes Estates, we have requested that developers shift that access further to the north and east in this location here. And that will align better with future development plans and that realignment of one hundredth Street in the future. So based on that, they had to kind of rearrange where things are at and how the layout is. I think this is a much better layout. They also are adding an additional green space in this location here, which they want as part of their development, provide some open space, some play area for the residents. Terms of sidewalks and trails, sidewalks are shown in blue, so are included for our sidewalk policy. In addition, a trail for the concept plan is proposed to connect from the existing trail in Mississippi Dunes that runs east-west, south along the bluff line, and then along the bluff lines at east and back up to this access at Hadley or proposed access at Hadley, as well as the connection into the neighborhood in this location here. In addition, with the extension of Mississippi Dunes Boulevard, we are requiring a crosswalk, which is shown on the plans in this location, to provide a safe crossing of that extension of Mississippi Dunes Boulevard for trail users. Public utilities and water and sewer are available to the site. City water is available from the north. The city is requesting extension of the water main to the southwestern property line that butts one hundred third street. And then city sewer will eventually be serviced via the south district sewer from the east as additional development comes east to west. Over in the interim, a temporary lift station is proposed to connect into the existing sewer system to the north. Quickly landscaping, tree mitigation is required based on some tree removal occurring at the top of the bluff line in this area here, do some grading in the trail. Keep in mind that the trees on the bluff itself will remain as far as this development. Hundred nineteen caliber inches of tree mitigation is required. Developers opting to plant trees versus pay mitigation fee for that. So they will revise the plans, include forty-eight additional trees. In addition, thirteen additional coniferous trees are required with the requirement of one per unit. And those are conditions of approval in the staff recommendation. Winding up here with architecture, same as was proposed with the concept plan, one- and two-story products with tuck-under garages, different exterior materials, front-covered porches. And a special note that the garages are flush with the front porch and not garage forward. Finally, we did have a neighborhood meeting back on April twentieth. Seven residents attended the meeting. Questions were raised regarding density, proposed infiltration areas and stormwater, increased traffic and speed on Mississippi Dunes Boulevard, the buffer areas along the north and the property lines, safety concerns with the trail crossing of Mississippi Dunes Boulevard, and whether or not a stop sign could be located at Mississippi Dunes Boulevard and Nineteenth Street. So with that, Mr. Chair, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of both the zoning amendment and the preliminary plat, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to add anything?
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission. My name is Tom Bachruchis with Capstone Homes, located at one four zero one five, Sunfish Lake Boulevard. Located at one four zero one five Sunfish Lake Boulevard in Ramsey. I you know, I know it's been a long night, but I just want to make just a couple of quick comments. Again, first, I want to say thank you. Uh as we discuss this further and now, as you know, our neighborhood's called Settlers Bluff and we're excited to uh. Bring it to Cottage Grove, the Liberty Detached Townhome Community. Uh we started dialogue with the staff back in two thousand twenty. Uh we've had four public meetings, including a neighborhood meeting. And uh it's all been very good, even though some of the plan has evolved uh since the last time uh your you and the body have seen this. Um the site plan elements have still not changed, which is very key. Uh again, what's really key is the detached townhome housing product. Um it's it's a product that allows singles, young couples. Uh it's it's a product that also allows active adults, our our single level. So um it's really been a positive, positive product in other communities. Uh in regards to manage HOAs, it's gonna be a clean neighborhood because we're managing all the lawn and snow removal. Um as Ben alluded to in the report, uh we're providing a very nice trail corridor. And a trail with that, that's all marked in red in front of you. And just keep in mind, this is a little over twenty five hundred linear feet of trail. So even though it provides great connectivity for the neighborhood. It also really acts as a regional trail for the surrounding community and neighbors. Um the proposal also still uh uh includes overlook area for viewing the river valley, which is very important. We added another green space in the center as Ben alluded to, uh just because we felt we wanted to do that. Being that there's a hundred and fifty five uh detached townhome. Uh lots here, so and and because of the access change, so we wanted to make that really visible as you come in. Off of Hadley or if you if you're coming in from Mississippi Dunes, but. We're very confident now everybody's gonna be coming in from Hadley being where it's located. Uh then also the thirty foot landscape buffer along Hadley, again, all landscaped and will be H way maintained. Um and also with the basin and the ponding on the south side, um it really provides some great us um. Setback from from the future county road, uh as you can see with the two two cul-de-sac uh uh that come down to the south there. So. Uh that's a little bit. So these site plan elements have not changed. We've stuck it with the plan. Um regarding phasing, just to let you know, our goal is to begin grading late June, early July. Grade the whole entire site, but we'll build seventy eight lots. We'll build seventy eight lots for this phase. And then next year, uh as long as the market's really good, we'll we'll finish out the seventy seven lots, which is the second phase. Total build out is probably gonna be three to three and a half, four years, depending on sales. But just to let you know, that's where we're at. So that's all I have this evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. And I'll be I'll be here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. I the first thing I noticed on the amended plan was. The difference in the um stormwater basin. I really do think the way you've re. Reconfigured it is gonna be a striking feature for that walking trail and for that neighborhood. Um so that's that's that stood out to me right away.
Thank you. We agree.
Alright, with that, I will go ahead and open public comment. Prior to doing that, go through instructions again. Uh you've got two options. You can post a question using the Q and A option. If you post a question, I'll state the question to the Planning Commission and staff, and we will address the question accordingly. Uh you may also use the raise my hand option. If you wish to verbally ask a question, please test your device's microphone prior to selecting the raise my hand option to assure that you'll be heard. I'll then call on you by name and to ask the question. Please understand that once the question is asked, you'll be muted. If you have follow up questions, please reselect the raise my hand option. With that, we will open public hearing. And it looks like we have a hand up. Director, can you unmute Mark?
Alright, Mark, if you unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Hi, this is Mark Isaacson. I live uh in Mississippi Dunes Townhomes just to the north. Of the new. Proposed subdivision. And uh appreciate the neighborhood meeting that we had last week. Expressed our concerns there, and they were summarized well by Ben. Um my specific concerns are still. Traffic oriented. Uh I disagree with the statement that. Most people will be coming in from Hadley. I know most people from living in the area are heading south or north, rather. Not south, so anybody that uh is leaving instead of going south. To the to turn around and go back north again, just not gonna happen. So Mississippi Dunes Boulevard then becomes a lot more traffic. So there are three concerns there. One is the construction traffic, and I think I've been assured that. That would be prohibited on Mississippi Dunes. They'd have to come in from. Uh Hunter Street, uh just like they do for Summers Landing or similar to that. And then uh the uh. Uh crosswalk for the trail. It looks like in the uh latest layout that that. Will cross Mississippi Dunes Boulevard in the middle of the curve. So I think visibility is going to be a concern, especially. If the cars are going thirty miles an hour or faster through there. Which brings the other concern. I'd like to see a four way stop at Mississippi Dunes Boulevard. And uh Ninety Eighth Street, there already are stop signs on Ninety Eighth Street, which would be a matter of. Two more, a four way stop, similar to that uh down the road on. Ninety fifth, I think it is, in Mississippi Dunes. So I'd like to see those. Addressed, improved. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mark. Um. Does does staff or the applicant have a any sort of visual rendering of what that crosswalk might look like and what sort of traffic control measures are gonna be implemented there?
Yeah, Chair Kamada, this is Ryan Burfine. Again, I can answer the the questions um that were just discussed. Um I guess specifically, as you mentioned, in terms of that crosswalk, um it's a thirty mile an hour roadway residential street. Um that fits well with the standard. Uh it's crosswalk striping. And then there's crosswalk signage at the crosswalk, uh denoting it, and there's also advanced warning signage. Um in each direction as well, giving drivers advanced notice. Um that's very typical. Of this type of situation and in line with the the standards that we follow from from MinDOT.
Okay.
In terms of uh the stop sign request at Ninety Eighth Street. So when you have side stops, right? So just Ninety Eighth Street. I believe stops on each side of Mississippi Dunes Boulevard. Um that's not. Really true intersection control. That's just uh denoting right of way. It's saying Ninety Eighth Street, driver stop. Yield right of way to drivers on Mississippi Dunes. Once you do an always stop, that's a form of intersection control, and that's not something that. Um the city is able to put in really at will. Uh once you get to intersection control, you have to meet warrants, and the warrants require a certain amount of traffic. Um which this intersection um uh does not meet. It's it's quite. It's well below um what would require an always stop installation. Um and we do follow those those requirements that come down from the federal and state level, um because you really don't want unnecessary. Uh intersection control and always stops because it leads to actually greater safety concerns. Um as drivers don't feel the need to stop in a situation, you get increased situations of of of. Not stopping at stop signs, rolling stop signs. So unfortunately, we are tied to that, um and we're not able to to do the always stop installation. Uh last question related to traffic, um uh as Ben mentioned, this intersection did move further north, but is still a little bit south on Hadley. Um we are actually still looking at refining that exact location with the developer. Um as it relates to Hadley Avenue, of course, the further north you can get it, the more um residents will be. You know, likely to go out to Hadley Avenue. So that's not totally set in stone yet. Also, Mississippi Dunes Boulevard is. And was designed as a collector roadway. It's forty feet wide, and there's very little, if any, uh driveway is directly accessing it. Um it was designed uh to handle more traffic. Um the road was stubbed with those future road extension signs. Um so really, this is in line with the planning of that roadway um with this connection.
Okay, as with. As with any. Infield development like this, I think the. The concerns being articulated by the HOA to the north there are. Typical and and warranted. I like the implementation of that crosswalk. Um. Does the um continuation of that road. Stay forty feet wide or does it narrow? Are there any other? Measures that can be taken to maybe deter people from from using that as a as a throughway?
Uh Mr. Chair, right now, that will be a narrower road section, forty feet wide is the old standard for a collector roadway. Um and with obviously less traffic on the southern end, um right now, we're looking at a thirty two foot wide roadway section um on this extension of Mississippi Dunes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have any other? Comments for or against? Uh Director, I'm not seeing anything in Q and A. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anyone.
Nor am I, Mr. Chair.
Uh thank you, Mark, again for your time. If we've got no further comment, uh we will go ahead and close public hearing. So public hearing is closed. Further comment from the commission members?
This is Commissioner Fisher. I appreciate that um that access road was changed. Um I know that there was a lot of concern with safety. Last time we talked about it, so I appreciate the city and the developer working together to. Come up with a better um solution for that. So thank you for doing that.
Agreed. I agree with Commissioner Fisher. I was I was happy to see those changes implemented. And you know, I think they're for the better. Like I said, I think the. The retention pond is gonna be a more striking feature now for the neighborhood, and I think that's gonna add some aesthetic value.
Question from Commissioner Bigum, um probably for the applicant. Um he had mentioned the stages of or the phases. Um looking at the the rendering of the neighborhood, are they, how is that, is that filling up? Is that just based on uh the lots purchased? Are they moving different parts of the? Development north to south? What does that look like for? Each phase?
Yeah, so um members of the commission, uh the phase will begin along Hadley, which is the east side. And so it will be that road, um there'll be a few lots to the north, uh some in the middle block there, and then the first cul-de-sac. And then that's your first phase for construction. And then second phase will be the remainder of the site, and that will be next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then I have a follow up question related to traffic for uh staff. This might be directed at Ryan. Uh you said you have to meet certain uh standards for for a. For like a a formal traffic control at that intersection at Ninety Eighth. Um. What would trigger, what would trigger, you know, a future traffic study or, you know, um? At what point in the future, if if it did become a problem, uh what would be the recourse for the uh neighbors to the north?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so the specific requirements are at an always stop. To install an always stop, you need an average of three hundred vehicles per hour for an eight hour period on Mississippi Dunes Boulevard. Um and while or the Bain Road, which we assume to be Mississippi Dunes Boulevard, based on the traffic counts we have today. Or in two hundred vehicles per hour for eight hours on the side street. Um so you're talking about twenty four hundred vehicles in one direction, sixteen hundred vehicles in eight hundred, eight in an eight hour period. Um you know, right now, there's about a thousand cars a day um on Mississippi Dunes and less than that on Ninety Eighth, so it's well below that threshold. Um certainly, we continue to monitor these roadways. Mississippi Dunes is a state aid roadway, so we do traffic counts every two years to continue to watch those traffic levels. And determine if an always stop is needed.
Good. Thank you, sir. That was. A very comprehensive answer. Um we have any further questions or comment from the commission?
This is Commissioner Knabel. I just have a question about where the crosswalk would be going. I know you said you're gonna be putting up signs. Is there any way to have? You know, something that would allow the people who are walking on that to. Kind of like where where Woodridge is, to hit a button, have a couple of the signs you're gonna have there. You know, flash some lights, say, hey, people are gonna be crossing.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, um in advance, crossing um a pedestrian activated signal like that is really reserved for. Um lane uh roadways with three or more lanes, um so two lanes in a center left or really four lanes like Woodridge. Um and higher speeds, thirty five, um typically thirty five miles an hour or greater. Um. So in this situation, being just a standard residential street, two lane roadway, um it really wouldn't meet the warrants for that type of pedestrian activated signal. Um as it would that you've seen, as mentioned, on Woodridge, by Woodridge Parker on uh Hinton Avenue uh up south of Seventieth Street. But we do feel very comfortable with with the installation that is proposed. Like I said, that does follow MinDOT guidance um and very standard for this type of mid block. Crossing of a local residential street.
Alright. Thank you, gentlemen. Further questions or comment? Seeing none, I would look for a motion. I motion to approve the preliminary plat. And uh zoning amendment, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report. Do we have a second?
Second from Commissioner Bigum.
Was second from Commissioner Bigum. Further conversation for the for the comment.
This is Commissioner Frazier. Um we haven't talked about it, but I know when the concept plan came up. Um both myself and and Commissioner Britton, who's obviously no longer on the the commission. Um had some concerns about the forty foot wide lots. Um especially because the the. Our five district, I think that we're we're rezoning to um carries a a um. A lot performance of sixty feet lot size. Um I do like a lot of stuff about the proposed development. I like, I actually do like the 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 way it's been redrawn. I think it does look a lot better. I think traffic would have been worse through Mississippi Dunes if it stayed. How it was, and so hopefully this will fix a lot of the problems. I like the extra green space um that was added. My concern is just that I it in looking at the pictures that were provided about where these other, where this product was put in other places. It looks too tight to me, and I don't see, I don't see the. What we're getting for cutting twenty feet off of each lot from our performance standards. And maybe that means that this should be a different zoning uh than in our five. I understand that we're below the density. Uh for a medium residential, um but to me, this just is too big of a stretch. To do in our five district um and say this will work in the city. So. That's my position on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Frazier. I. I share some of your concerns with the narrower lots. Um. However. As you stated, the overall layout appeals to me. I know this is kind of an atypical housing product. It meets a niche between. Somebody who's looking for a single family but needs to stay in a, you know, a townhome price point. I know there are constraints to development, and you know, land is one of them. I know that's a driving factor with these smaller lots. Um and in keeping the costs down. Um but I I agree, maybe there's some uh latitude to. Uh carve out a a different zoning classification and, you know, for future uh comprehensive plans that maybe. More conforms to this type of development. I guess um it's something that we'll have to see how it. You know, how it how it fares in 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 the market, you know, if it. If it exceeds the developer's expectations for um. For demand or if if you know people are gonna gravitate towards other other types of product.
Mr. Chair, if I could comment quickly?
Yeah.
Uh in terms of the P U D request, we are getting a big chunk of land for right of way for the future. Realignment of one hundredth as well, so we are taking away quite a bit of land uh from the developer and trying to. Fit the product in and and make this project economically feasible. to fit the product in and make this project economically feasible. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
So there, so the city is getting something out of it in terms of the, the road realignment. I understand that everyone has to make, you know, some, some sacrifices in, in that regard. You know, would, would the applicant have anything to say as far as how this housing product is, is received by, by consumers in regard to the narrower lots? I guess ultimately, it's the people that are going to live there that are going to be the most bothered by it.
The Chair, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to answer this. We can't build them fast enough. The consumers have really likened this because it's opened the opportunity to meet a price point that is not met in the marketplace, but still provide a product that looks good and provides the necessary yard that they need at this, at this, you know, age. If it's a young couple, if it's someone that's an active adult, they don't want a lot. This site is unique. We are, we are abutting a PUD neighborhood to the north that has the detached townhomes as well and also attached. We feel that the detached townhome product that has lawn maintenance and snow removal and it provides these amenities with trails and all the trees that will, will be put in. And the scenic is, is, it's really good for the consumer. We've, we, we're going to be doing more of these type of neighborhoods because the, the market is demanding it. Not many people are doing this. It's slab-on-grade. So you get a one level or two levels. So it's very unique. And anyway, it's, it's from 300 to about 400 would be max. It depends on the consumer, how much they want to spend. But you saw the renderings that were offered and we're excited about this product. And we, we feel that Cottage Grove will, will absorb it very well.
Alright. Thank you for your comment. Further, further discussion? Alright. Seeing none, I would move to a vote. Turn it over to the director for roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair Cambada?
Aye.
Commissioner Bigum?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frazier?
No.
Commissioner Knabel?
Aye.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five to one. Moving on.
Thank you.
Item number seven. Thank you, everyone who's participated to this point for your comment and for your time. Moving on to item seven, approval of planning commission minutes from March 22nd, 2021. If there are no changes, I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Frazier.
Okay, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Frazier. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Knabel.
Second from Commissioner Knabel. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'll turn it over to Director for roll call.
Commissioner Frazier?
Aye.
Commissioner Knabel?
Aye.
Commissioner Bigum?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Aye.
And Chair Cambada?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. On to item eight, reports. Eight point one, recap of April City Council meetings.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. Really quickly before I hit that, I just wanted to comment on requirement. I think it's state mandated that we have to go to in-person meetings starting in July. So I know we had that conversation last month and the decision was to remain virtual as long as possible. Well, that time clock looks like it's coming to an end come our July meetings. So just wanted to note that and provide that update to the group. In terms of recapping of previous council meetings, on April 7th, we did not have anything on the regular agenda specific to items that have been reviewed by the Planning Commission. With that said, we did have a workshop for the potential redevelopment of Cedarhurst with that development group. That is something that we'll see, I think, fairly soon in terms of a, a plan, in terms of redevelopment of that property. So I just wanted to give the heads up there. On April 21st, we had a couple of items on the agenda that were reviewed last month at the Planning Commission. One being the zoning amendment and Meyer subdivision for 6,500.
Oh, I get out of this stupid thing.
Excuse me. There we go. That was approved by council. We also had the XL Energy Regular Station, Regulator Station at Hadley and Scott Boulevard, which was approved. Glacial Valley Estates, the first edition final plat was approved by council as well. And finally, the CUP to allow the expansion of non-conforming use at 10870 Ideal Avenue was denied by council per recommendation of Planning Commission. So with that, I'm going to turn it to Steve for any council comments.
Alright, thank you, Director Boike. And thank you, everyone here tonight for putting in over three and a half hours of time. Very definitely appreciate your dedication as always. Good dialogue tonight and consideration back and forth on these issues. And, you know, it's never an easy position to be in when you seek to make as many people happy as possible, but yet you know it's impossible to do that. There is something that's on the screen. Could we take that down?
Oh, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so a couple of things I want to mention very quickly. Number one is, as was mentioned here tonight, Mr. Ken Britton is no longer a part of the commission with us. And as we have done in the past, we thank him for his dedication and service to the city, which has been substantial, including at one point here a few years back, being Volunteer of the Year. So we do have an opening on the position and I would like to share that I am going to be optioning this opening back to someone that many of us know. And his name is Mr. Jarrett Wright. And Jarrett has been out away serving our country on a deployment for almost the past year. And I do remember it was his chair that was vacated, which let other movements take place. So I'll be bringing him before the council, have an opportunity for him to come back and sit in his chair once again. He did a great job for us. And then now one additional thing, which, which I think is kind of cool that I'd like to share with everybody, is that we've gone through the time of COVID. And both as a society and a country, we've had many things that we have had to change our way of doing. And so last year in particular, there were many things as a city and community that we were not allowed to have. One of them being the Memorial Day Ceremony at City Hall. So this year, I'm very happy to say that we will be bringing that back. And we'll be doing it in a completely 100% responsible socially-distanced fashion with all the bells and whistles. And this is something that I worked closely with Public Safety Director Pete Kerner to achieve his agreement and encouragement that we do this. So this will be happening up at City Hall on Memorial Day at noon. And there will be more details to come. It should be a great time as we pay respects. So with that, I will open myself up to any questions that any members of the commission have of me as a council member or anything the city council is currently working on.
Give your time. Councilmember Dennis, I'm curious if there's any plans or tentative plans for fireworks or Strawberry Festival. I know those were two items that were also set aside last year due to COVID. And I know I'm, from my interaction with public, I get asked about it all the time.
Alright, well, thank you, Commission Chair. And, and the answer is, we are going to do fireworks. And that will be something that will be run by the Lions Club. And of course, the city will provide, provide some support to that. As far as Strawberry Fest, that is an independent outside group that operates outside the parameters of the city itself. So much like we do, you know, for 4th of July, there will be some assistance that we provide. You know, for example, when we have the parade, right, we have public safety out there to map out the route, provide site security and, and kind of blocking off the roads and those types of things. So people have a safe path to go down. But the Strawberry Fest Committee has decided, and I, I think they've had some information put out already, that they were unable to bring this together this year. As you can imagine, an event of that size requires a tremendous amount of planning and a huge number of volunteers and other people that work toward that cause. So because they were not able to put that together and do it in a timely fashion, and timely being the key word here, because when you think about coordinating an event like that, one of the things that is integral to it is the carnival that we have. So the carnival tends to travel north in the height of summer when it's nice out. And then when it gets colder later in the year. So I know last year, for example, they thought, well, maybe we try to do something in, you know, October, even Oktoberfest thing. But they've already traveled south, kind of like birds that fly south for the warmth. So we just didn't, they did not have the opportunity to coordinate that event. And for, for folks to bring their kids and people have a great time with those rides and everything. That's an integral part of that, along with music and other things that are provided there. So I know that that particular group has, has come under some, some pressure and, and even some negative response from certain members of the community. But I have a lot of empathy for them because I know that they work very hard and that is a 100% volunteer organization. Nobody's on the payroll there to do that job, but it brings a great return to the community. So our hope is that as we get through 2021 and, and things continue to go better for us as a society and as a country, that hopefully next year, we'll be able to come back with that process and we'll be bigger and better than ever. So that's my hope.
Alright, thank you. Additional questions for councilmember? I think we're all set. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Item 8.2, response to planning commission inquiries. There were none, therefore there should be no responses. That's correct. Director Boike?
Correct.
And then 8.3, planning commission requests. Do any members of the commission have any requests for council? I'm sorry, for, for staff? Alright, seeing none, move on to item nine. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'm happy to motion to adjourn. Commissioner Bigum?
We have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Bigum. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Fisher. Sorry, not Frazier, Fisher.
Second from Commissioner Fisher?
It's so late, I don't even know what my name is anymore.
I like that.
This is going to be a unanimous vote. Turn it over to the director for roll call.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Bigum?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frazier?
Aye.
Commissioner Knabel?
Aye.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Aye.
And Chair Cambada?
Aye. Motion carries. We have concluded. Thank you, everyone, participants and panelists for your time tonight. I appreciate all the work you guys do and I wish we had this many panelists at every meeting. It's nice to see community involvement. Thank you.